6:30, we'll call this meeting to order. Everybody who's got cell phones, please silence them. And please rise for the invocation and pledge. Father in heaven, thank you very much for the many blessings that we have living in this community. We are glad for the gifts and talents of everybody on this board. Give us wisdom this evening as we discuss everything. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President Mark Solow.
Here.
Director Anna Wise.
Here.
President Dan Wettler.
Here.
Vice President Cliff Dickerson.
Here.
Director Phil Calhoun.
Here.
All right. Approval of consent calendar. Anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody on the public wish to speak to anything on the consent calendar? If not, I'd like to hear a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public participation. You all have a copy of the agenda? Anybody wish to speak? And if you do, just please briefly read what it says, what you're supposed to and not supposed to say.
Are you skipping 2C?
Thank you. I did. Oh, no, actually, though, that's part of the consent calendar, and I asked if anybody wanted to talk. But if you want me to back up, I can. Because that was part of the consent calendar, and I says, anybody wish to speak to this? So I apologize, Ward. I went a little bit too fast.
Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, Ward. I'm curious, based on those requests that you receive, if you have approved all of the public member appointments.
On the consent calendar, we automatically did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ward. Because you are on that, and we're grateful that you turned in an application. Thanks.
I have a message to pass on. Thank you.
Okay. Now, what about public participation? Ward?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again, and thank you for this opportunity. Let me first apologize, I won't be able to spend the whole evening with you. I have meetings that were double booked today. This is my fourth one. I have a fifth one after this. Let me bring you up to date on some highlights, which I garnered. You knew I was away at Thousand Oaks for the winter board meeting of the state garden clubs, of which I'm a director. An awful lot of emphasis has been placed on water conservation worldwide. And when you think about that old phrase, "You know globally, but act locally," well, there are some things that are significant. And I just want to highlight a couple of things. The Stellenbosch municipality on Monday imposed, this is just a few days ago, stricter water restrictions limiting homeowners to some 6,000 liters a month. That municipality, which governs the towns of Stellenbosch, Franschek, Pinel, receives two-thirds of its municipal water from Cape Town, South Africa, via the Wemersknack Thie Water and those dams. The new restrictions were imposed in order to bring the area in line with other municipalities, which have already lowered their consumption to 6,000 liters a month per household, or 50 liters per person per day. That's about 12 gallons. Here in America, our average is about 144 gallons per person per day nationwide. China is 20. There are many other places around the world that understand water conservation much better than our country does. Locally, February 8th, Department of Water Resources announced statewide water allocations going forward. The vast majority of state water contractors will receive 20% of their requests. Statewide allocations are based on conservative assumptions and may change depending on rain or snow received this winter. This incremental adjustment to allocations reflects the water supply, said DWR Director Carla Nemeth. You've heard quotes from her before. California's variable weather is why we all must make conservation a way of life to sustain our economy and our environment in an ever-changing climate. Long term, long term, the board of this organization is going to have to look like some of the others that are saying, "We just can't rely on income by selling a lot more water. We're just gonna have to realize we're not gonna have all that water to sell." Right now, we're lucky. We are, as a district. But we're also a very small district. If this town expands and we need a greater water supply, we need to be looking at how do we adjust our thinking as a board in managing our entire enterprise? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Ward.
Well, 12 gallons. Do you drink, or do you take a bath? I guess you'd drink. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Four. We are gonna switch A and B because the audit's gonna be a little quicker, and so would you please come forward? Or Kevin, you want to speak to it first?
Yeah, I can. This is Heidi Coppin. She is from Till &amp; Co., our current auditing firm. This is actually their last year that they'll be auditing the district. Those are our procedures. We have to switch every six years, and they've been doing it for the last six years. And so she's a partner there. She's here to present the financials of the district.
Okay. I'm glad you brought that up, because that was actually the first thing on my point, that government code section allows us to do the audit for six years, and then after six years, you have to either rotate audit partners, or you have to switch audit firms if you don't, if the firm doesn't have an audit partner to rotate. And that started in the 13, 14 years. So we actually, under government code, we could do the audit through June 30, 19, but as Kevin mentioned, you do have an internal policy that you switch auditors after six years. So this week, you'll be looking for a new auditor for next year.
That's correct.
We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so that means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The financial statements and maintaining an effective internal control system are the district's management's responsibility. Properly designed internal controls reduce the likelihood that there will be errors or fraud occurring without being detected. The board relies on management to establish those policies, and the board's responsibility is for oversight and leadership and monitoring. We did perform a test of internal controls over cash disbursements and payroll, and we found no exceptions or issues during those tests that we need to report to you. We did make one adjustment to the financial statements as prepared by Kevin, and that is an adjustment that we make every year, and Kevin asks us to. It's an actuarially determined number, and it relates to the retiree medical benefits. And the adjustment this year was $52,000. So you'll see in the financial statements after adjustments that the net results for last fiscal year was an increase in net assets of $403,000. So revenues exceeded expenses by $403,000. We are pleased to report that we have no audit findings or issues to discuss with you, and we wanted to thank Kevin and all the district staff for being very helpful and helping us get through the process. Now, at this point, I'm really here to answer any questions that you might have on the audit. Yes?
Are our reserves adequate for the amount of money we put through the district? Is there a percentage or something that we should try to meet?
You know, you do, you do have a nice size reserve. Kevin just brought up page nine. Unrestricted reserves are $1.1 million, and then there are restrictions for debt service that's required by some of the debt instruments, and then capacity fees. I don't know, you know, we don't, we didn't really look at that, but that might be something that you might suggest looking at in the future, is what reserve percentages are like for other districts, so you can see kind of how you compare to others.
I would say, on average, just based on industry standard, we're below average when it comes to reserves, just based on our, historically, how we were, we drove those down in the past. I can tell you, though, that, like Heidi said, the prior year financial statements were, if you look at them, were about, I believe, about a $700,000 net difference in net assets from one year to the next. So last year, we were actually showing a loss, where this year, we're actually showing a, an increase, not a profit, an increase in net assets. So that means that we are driving our reserves up based on our current policies.
Did you see any changes that we could make as a board to improve our oversight?
No, I, no. And if we had anything like that, we would bring it up to you in the written report, so no.
What about our, is it our credit rating that, is that A? Is that?
A-stable.
A-stable. Does the audit play into the credit rating at all?
When the credit, when the credit, or the crediting agency, which I believe are A-stables through S&amp;P, they do monitor our financial statements through that. They take that, they do take our financial statements into consideration. The main thing that I've seen them looking at, though, is projections, is what you're telling them through your credit calls and your conference calls with them about where the district's going. And then what they're doing is they're taking your financials and seeing, is that where the district is going? So they're basically testing you to see if you're basically being truthful with them on where you see the district going. So our A-stable was based on reserves increasing that through rate increases, that we were going to get our revenues back up. And so what they'll do is they'll take a look at what we had said we were going to do versus what the financials. And I can tell you that the financials are mirroring what we had told them we're going to do. So it does, from an audit standpoint, they don't take it into consideration, but from a financial standpoint, they take the audit financials and then they test it against it.
And that happens once a year?
We send it to them once a year. A lot of times, our credit conference calls with them happen about every three years, and then they'll do a credit check on us, and then the last time, that's when they downgraded us. We were an A-minus, or an A-plus, and then we went to an A-stable, is what they called it. Thank you.
This is probably directed at Kevin, but on page 54, there's a note receivable from Ark of Butte County.
Correct.
I don't, I've never seen that before in any of our, could you tell me what that is?
Yeah. So when we sold our old building, we actually took back a note.
Oh, that's who, oh, that's who bought it.
We took back a note on it. So we are constantly getting payments from them on a monthly basis, so we actually, in a way, still own the building from the creditor's standpoint.
Okay.
32.
How did we arrive at the comments on the NPDES permit and the water rights?
Yeah, that's my next question.
Yeah, because it seems to me that that would have an effect overall, because it's a really iffy spot there that we can't nail down at this point in time. So how much weight do you give that?
Those notes are prepared by management, as far as the contingency notes.
Contingency notes.
Yeah, those are prepared by management.
Yeah, so we feel like we can meet the requirements one way or another to fulfill the requirements of the NPDES permit, but we also want to be upfront with the, with the auditors, that there is exposure out there for that of fines and of certain things. And so that's basically what the contingency note, kind of stating to others out there that this is a looming issue.
Do you still think that the estimated cost of that project is 17 and a half million?
I want to be conservative when it comes to the financial statements, and so I don't want to underestimate it. I'd rather overestimate it. In case everything goes kablooey, and it is 17 and a half million, that we haven't kind of understated what the cost is. I don't, personally, I don't think it is, but from a conservative standpoint, I want to put the highest cost associated with it.
We are bitter to do that.
That's your own mic question. Kevin, are you happy with the auditor's work?
Oh, yeah. No, if I didn't have to change, I wouldn't change. We've developed a really good relationship with them. They, they treat our staff very well. They're here, and a lot of times, auditors are, have a bad reputation because they're looking for bad things, they're looking for the negative. They're nothing but helpful with us, and it's just been a really good working relationship with them. So I have a feeling, once we're through, maybe our next one, that hopefully that we'll have them back and have them back over. So, yeah. No, I really appreciate Heidi's help and all that she's done for us.
Thank you.
I also felt it was well-prepared. It was fairly complete, I thought, and addressed most of the major issues that we're facing right now.
Thank you.
Any else on board, staff?
You know, I did have one last question I forgot. On page 62, what exactly is that? Could you explain that? Post-employment benefits funding?
I'm gonna let you explain that.
Yeah. That's a good one. The, so the district offers medical to retirees that meet certain criteria. So we know that there's a future liability out there, that there's a commitment for those medical payments, medical insurance payments for those retirees. So the district actually has to hire an actuary. An actuary does these calculations to come up with what sort of liability is out there in the future for retirees that at some point will be getting medical insurance. So those, that's what those numbers are, basically.
And so--
In the financials, there's always a line that states that.
Yeah, it's an OPEB. And currently with the district, there's two ways that districts handle this, or cities or whoever is doing these, handle these. You can actually open up a trust, and it's irrevocable trust, and put monies away into that trust. So you basically take some of your reserves and you put it into that trust. If you were to do that, it would actually decrease your liability on your balance sheet. The district has, because ours is fairly a small window of what we offer for healthcare, the district has made the choice to just fund the as-a-pay-as-you-go process. So what you're seeing is that we're, every year, we're accruing an additional amount, but we're also decreasing that amount by the amount we're paying for our current people. So it does go down, but most of the time, the net number's going to be higher than what we paid out for our current retirees. So you're gonna see this thing continually grow up, up, up. But what the district has said is that they don't want to tie up their money over here in a trust, and what they'd rather do is just pay as you go for the current retiree employees.
And that's a very common way to do it. That's the way that most, most agencies do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if you have no more questions, then--
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. If nobody from the public wishes to ask a question, well, then I think that we are, you get to go home.
All right.
Just the board needs to accept the aye report.
Anybody from the public wish to speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move we accept the auditor's report.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Kevin, you'd like to introduce A?
Yes. So you've kind of been reading my manager's reports. Emile's here, too, and he can answer some questions, too, I know. But the water rights, the district currently has water rights, and we have permits, two permits outstanding, and Paula's gonna give more detail on this, but that we're trying to either go to license or review. We went through a environmental study that kind of got stalled out due to either the water board not work going further with it, they had a drought that they were dealing with, they had enforcement issues. So a lot of water rights issues were kind of just set aside. There, we're trying to get this back going because we have, we have a lot of money that we put into an EIR that's now, we're hoping is not stale, but we're thinking might need a little more touch-up. Paula has been our water rights engineer from the beginning. She has intimate knowledge of the district's water rights and is the voice of the district when it comes to dealing with the state agency. Being that we have four new board members, I felt it was important that before we start really getting deep into the weeds of the water rights and you guys having to actually make decisions on them, I thought it would be good for Paula to come up and really give you a Water Rights 101 presentation, so that you guys understand the district's water rights, what we're talking about. When you guys are looking to make decisions, you understand what permit, whatever number it is, that, what that entails, what it holds, and all of that. So with that, I'll introduce Paula Whalen. She's got a presentation for you.
Well, thank you, Kevin, and thank you to the board members and President Whitlam. Appreciate being able to come here tonight. It's always nice to say, "I'm going to paradise." Someone asked me if that was figuratively or literally, and I said, "I hope both."
Yeah, really.
You never know till you get here, and the tomatoes start to fly, so wasn't sure. But I hope that I can provide some background information to those of you who need it, let you know where we stand with the water rights, which Kevin was kind when he said, "Well, it got stalled." It moves very slowly at the State Water Resource Control Board, one of the bureaucracies that has a very difficult time in this state making decisions. I think second only to the Coastal Commission. So we've really, and we probably all have our horror stories of what we've dealt with, but it's, it's been a problem, not just for districts like yours, but for individuals and very large cities and small towns and mom-and-pop operations across the board. So having said that, well, I thought we would give a little background on, kind of, what are water rights? Kevin mentioned Water Rights 101, and I do like to give that background because I think it's important for us to have an understanding of what California water rights are, just briefly, and then going into what are the district's rights? So if that's, if you'll allow me, I'll indulge me a little bit to the sources of water and claims of right in, in the state of California, which is different than other states. It's probably the only state that has a dual system of water rights, and we're gonna talk about that. That makes it flexible, but it also makes it very complicated. The types of water, and there are different types of water, are, the first is surface water, and that's water that you can see. Water that's flowing in a channel, it's above ground, you can look at it, you can see it. And to use it in this state, you have to have either a claim of a property right for it, which is a riparian right, or you had to have started diverting it prior to 1914, or you had to get a permit from the state of California. Those are the ways you can, you get to use surface water in this state. The other type of water known as surface water, they call it the same thing, but it is subterranean stream flow. And that's water that's flowing below ground that you can't see. It is hydrologically connected to surface flow, so in some cases, where the rivers are flowing down, underneath, there's a subterranean component that is flowing in the same direction as the surface flow, but it is flowing in concentrated beds and banks below ground. And people tap into that type of water using wells, infiltration galleries, things like that. And same type of thing for use of that water in the state of California, same types of way to use it, as I said, property right, a permit, or, I don't need that part, a property right or a permit, or some type of a pre-1914 use.
Did you explain property right a little more?
Yes. A property right is a claim of riparian right, which I'm gonna be getting to in more detail, but I'm glad you asked. And I did mean to say, anytime during the presentation you have questions, the board members should ask, I don't mind stopping at all. Sometimes it's better to stop and do that. So thank you. A property right is a right that exists by virtue of where your land is that you own with respect to where the water course is. And if it is contiguous to the parcel, then you have a chance of having a property right called a riparian right. And you can use the water on your riparian lands. Certain lands are riparian to the source, and that's what's meant by a property right. It isn't regulated by the state of California through the State Water Resource Control Board, but it is, it's a property right that's recognized by Superior Court. So, and I'll be getting more to that. Does that give you a little background there?
Yeah, I do want to dig deeper into it. I'll wait for the rest of the president.
We're gonna dig into it, so. The other type of water is groundwater, also water that you can't see, but this water is not bounded by beds or banks, it's not hydrologically connected to a surface stream. And it's generally wells that are away from any type of surface or subterranean stream. It can include springs that emanate from the hillsides and run down. Springs, I don't want to say all the time springs are groundwater. If a spring contributes to a water course, it could be considered surface water, but for the most part, groundwater is water that is not connected to any other type of subterranean or surface flow. And right now, it's unregulated by the state of California, by the State Water Resource Control Board. And that's what those abbreviation letters are, SWRCB. The State Water Resources Control Board is the regulatory agency in the state of California that governs the use of surface water. So the dual system of rights that I mentioned, there's two types. There's an appropriative right, which is the system based on appropriation, first in time, first in right. You start using the water first, you have the right to use it first. You file an application first, you have a senior right. It was based in mining law years ago, and people would stake a claim for their, you know, mining rights, and that's what an appropriative right system was built on. The other type of right, and this is what Board Member Jacobson was mentioning, is the riparian rights. Property right based on the location of the source to the lands. It's not based on first in time, first in right. It is a correlative right. So if I have a riparian right and write downstream from me, Board Member Jacobson has one, we have to share that water that's in the source. I can't take it all to the detriment of him, and he can't take it all to the detriment of the person below him. A riparian right is not regulated, I should say, by the state of California. You either have one or you don't. And how it's determined whether you have one is how the land is situated with respect to the water source. So if your parcel is contiguous to the water source, that's, that's fine. But if you split off a piece of your property and you sold it to your daughter, and you didn't reserve the riparian rights to that parcel, if it were no longer attached to the river or the stream, then that parcel has lost its riparian rights forever. They cannot be reattached. Districts don't really deal with riparian rights as much because you, every time you split a parcel, you guys are serving water to all these various parcels. So you're not really serving water under any claim of riparian right because the riparian right is, they would have had to have reserved the right for all of those parcels. There's very few subdivisions that operate under a claim of riparian right, hardly any cities or districts like this. But for your own lands, or you had property somewhere, you may have a riparian right. And just because you asked the question, I'll go just a step deeper, even though it doesn't really apply to the district. Riparian right water cannot be stored. So you have to take it in real time and use it in real time. It can't be taken in the winter and saved and used in the summer. It has to be taken and used, the rule of thumb is 30 days, but that's not codified. So it has to be taken and used as it, as it occurs in the source. So in some parts of California, there's not much surface water occurring in the summer months, so riparian diversions in smaller creeks and streams, there isn't much that can be done to use it for, like, irrigation. But there might be enough to use it for domestic use inside a house, or, you know, for some other industrial uses. But riparian rights, it can't be foreign in source or time. It can't be segmented from your property, segregated from your property, that's, can't be foreign in source, and it can't be foreign in time. You can't take it in one period for use in another period.
I have a question.
Sure.
If riparian rights, well, first of all, you said that surface water could actually be underground water if it has, such as an underground river. Now, if surface water rights are riparian rights on landowner's property, and that could be subsurface as well, if it's flowing, how do you determine a pool of water that may have a well dipping into it versus a flowing riparian right?
Well, it's a good point. Yeah, and it does make sense. The question is, how do you tell whether you've got subterranean flow, or whether you just have percolating groundwater, it's underground? Is it surface water, or is it groundwater? And, you know, how, how do you know that? Because you might be tapping into it under a riparian claim of right. If you are an overlier to that water source, then you either are pumping percolating groundwater or you're pumping a valid riparian right. or you're pumping a valid riparian right. Your land overlies the source. But when we are trying to figure out whether someone is pulling subterranean stream flow versus percolating groundwater, we have to look to publish geologic maps to see what type of deposits are laid in there, where the lands and where the water originates, where the water is originating from. The other thing that we have to do is look at the well driller, if you're pulling it from a well, which most people would be. We look at the well driller report to see what layers the well was drilled into, and then by using the, how many, you know, how far down the perforations are, you're able to tell what substrate the well is pulling from. And so, it is an opinion by, like a geologist, an engineering geologist, it is an opinion as to where the source of water is. That opinion stands or not stands unless it's challenged, and then in a court of law, someone would have to decide that.
So, so riparian rights are less of a right than percolating water rights on land, correct?
Well, I would have some people that would argue with you. A riparian right is the highest form of right that you can have for surface water.
But if surface water was underground water?
If it's subterranean stream flow, it would be better probably to have groundwater. I would, I would agree with you. Percolating groundwater, it's not regulated by anyone, and...
So, if it was determined to be riparian water, you could drill down deeper to percolating groundwater and resolve that issue in that manner?
In some geologic circumstances, you could do just that, and some people have done that.
Good, thank you.
Uh-huh. It's all clear as mud, really, you know? It's the stuff, no offense to Emily, but it's the stuff that attorneys...
It pays the bills.
Yeah. There'd be people who have been fighting about this for years.
Gives us food for thought about rights.
Paula, does this explain all the pumps I see in local creeks and streams that people are pulling?
Yeah.
They're maybe making a claim where they think they have a riparian right.
Well, and they may have a riparian right. And, and there are a lot of pumps around. Hopefully, all those people have valid claims of right for doing that. You know, it's kind of in the Wild West in some parts of the state for a long time. And as you know, everything's gets, is starting to get buttoned down in a lot of different areas, not just water, but especially water when we start having a lot of growth and people are trying to stop growth by affecting water policy. And then we also have droughts and floods that add into that. And so, things are a lot, a lot more focused on who has a right, who doesn't. Are you affecting my right, are you not? It's, as, as Emily said, you know, attorneys, engineers, everybody who investigates these things is having to spend time and money to do it, but it is a good time, if you didn't know, it's a good time to know what your claim of right is. Because we're not under the radar anymore. And I tell people this all the time, especially with Google Earth. You know, we can zero in and see pumps in creeks and streams. We can see wells, we can see pipelines. It doesn't take much, and that's just, you know, that's a 15-year-old can do that. And, and so, you know, it's really something, and you guys already have a handle on that, which you're way ahead of a lot of districts that are as big or bigger than yours, who clearly don't have a handle on their water policy. And, and now, you know, the time's coming, they're, they're having to put up their numbers and provide their documentation, and they don't have it. So, luckily, you're not in that position, so. Let me move on here to the part of the dual system of water rights, and this is something that the district has. A pre-1914 appropriation, and I mentioned this, the Water Commission Act of 1913 set up a procedure so that it wasn't like the Wild West, so that you had to file a notice, you had to file an application with the State Water Resource Control Board. At that time, it was called something different. But to say, I want to appropriate water from this creek for use on this land and this amount during this season, and that was the appropriative water right process that was set up. So, anybody who had been using water prior to 1914, under the old, you know, this is my water notice, could keep doing it and didn't need to go to the state for a water right permit. And what it, it did say, though, part of what the code said was that to have a valid pre-1914 right, you had to, and there's a variety of things, but one of them is that you had to post a notice or make notice that you were diverting water, where you were diverting it, how much, and for what its purpose was and what the end purpose was. You had to have built the works to do that diversion, and you had to continually use that diversion since that time with not more than a five consecutive year break in use. And...
Years, huh?
Yeah. And it's very difficult for some pre-1914 users to document their water use, because during the wars, a lot of time, during the war, a lot of times, the farms didn't get worked, and, and so, there was more than a five-year lapse. Other times, records, you know, are lost in fires, people don't remember, people are dying, you know what I mean, as it gets further on. But the pre-1914 appropriation, the district has, and we're going to be talking about it, it doesn't, it doesn't require State Water Resource Control Board approval for certain changes to it. So, it's not regulated by the State Water Resource Control Board, but the state requires that you file something called a statement of water diversion and use with them for a notice that you are diverting that water under that claim of right. It's the same thing for a riparian right, you have to do it, but as it applies to the district, you have a pre-1914 right, and, and it is required that you, you file a notice on that, which you did. The appropriation by permit, that's what I was saying after 1914, it's regulated by the state board. You can only modify certain things on a water right that's been issued to you, a permit or a license, and you have to go back to the state water board for approval. And that's that slow part that I was talking about. So, that's the difference between a pre-1914 appropriation and an appropriation by a water right permit after 1914. Percolating groundwater, and I'm only going to talk about it just briefly, you guys do have a well that you use, it's on the far west side of the, of the district boundary, I think, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just down here.
Okay. You have a, you have a percolating groundwater well, and, and that does figure into some of your water rights. But I'll mention groundwater, just because a lot of people are worried what it means. Diversion of groundwater doesn't require any regulatory approval, unless you're diverting it, like we said, from a subterranean stream, or if you are in certain counties who have blocked the export of groundwater. Certain counties, I know Yellow County, there's been others that have blocked the export of groundwater. Landowners can pump from under their property, remember I said if you were an overlier, you can pump from over your property and use it on overlying lands. You also can appropriate it if you're going to take it away from those lands, only in, you know, unless you're in an overdrafted basin. So, if you were in a basin that has been fully overdrafted, they will not let you take water out of your well and give it to another basin, you know, two miles down the road. Same thing with the counties, as I mentioned. So, that's what percolating groundwater, how you can appropriate and use percolating groundwater. And the reason it's been in the news, you may have heard of something called the California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SIGMA. It's the first real regulation of groundwater in the state of California. Every other state in the union has regulation of groundwater. We have not. And this is just dipping the toe into the water of full regulation. SIGMA has identified through, California Department of Water Resources has worked to identify 515 basins in the state of California. And those basins are groundwater basins, and they've put a hierarchy on them, whether they're, they're in balance, they're critically overdrafted, you know, where they are in the system. And PID is not within a designated basin at all. You have no compliance issues with SIGMA. Yes, sir?
I was at a meeting recently, and I asked that point, and they replied just like you did, and then one fellow rancher sitting over to one side, and he says, well, just wait, it's going to come your way. And I thought, does he know that I don't know?
Well, you know, I guess, remember Kellogg, that I feel that they've pretty well identified all of them. It's based on geologic mapping, and when you look at the map, and this is what I was going to get to you, those are all the basins. And as you can imagine, that the groundwater basins are pretty much the whole Central Valley, some of the coastal areas, and a few here or there. That's pretty much all it's going to be. The only thing that could change from there is whether you're in a high, medium, or low, or very low. And some of the very lows might change to low, some of the lows are going to change to medium, and some of the mediums are going to change to high. I don't think they're going to find new groundwater basins out there to regulate, but I do think that the ones that are very low, and people were thinking, oh, no one's going to bother with us, but in 10 years, it's going to go up to high. So, you tell them that we said that. Don't use my name, though.
So, on the pre-1914 appropriative rights, 3,600 gallons a minute, that's a little over 5 million gallons per day that we have absolute rights to.
Where are you? Where are you?
Well, you talked about pre-1914 appropriate rights for our...
He's back to page, yeah.
Yeah. And...
Did you jump ahead?
No, no.
He's back.
I went back to your pre-1914...
Oh.
...permit rights.
Yes, let's go back there.
And that says, we have eight cubic feet per second, about 3,600 gallons per minute. And it's not, it's not storage, just diversion only. But, so, that equates to about 5 million gallons per day, right?
What page are you on, Cliff?
His own calculations.
Oh, I'm on...
His own calculations over here.
I'm on my, I mean, yeah, I did the numbers myself.
Okay, we're going to cover that.
They're not in there.
Yeah, they're in there. We're going to...
Well, I mean, I just took 3,600 gallons a minute, times 60 minutes, times 24, that's 5 million by gallons.
You have that as a slide, as our pre-14 right.
So, so I was curious, before we get too far down the road on that, because this, to me, has been one of the issues Kevin and I have discussed, is our rights for water that flows through our system versus storage. And, and I know the storage is part of what we're trying to get perfected now, that we don't actually have the rights to. Currently, we only have the rights to this appropriative right, pre-1914, and that's based on this maximum of 5 million gallons a day. Is that right?
Well, you have the other rights as well.
Well, that...
You don't have, you only have one pre-1914 right. Do you, can, can we cover them?
He's, he's on page...
He's on page 20.
Actually, but we will get there.
We'll get there.
All right.
Let's, let's let her get through.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not shutting you down.
Because we were going sideways, and I want to get the bigger, overall picture.
We're not going to go, yeah.
Page 21.
Yeah, I know where it's at, I'm looking, I'm looking at here.
We're going to come to that.
Yeah, that's a different permit.
Yes, I know, we have two different types of permits.
Yep, I know that, too.
Let's get back to that.
Okay.
Let her make her presentation, because you jumped in.
Well, well, you know, and I, I want to answer all your questions, but I, I'm trying to build a base and get there.
Sure.
Okay. These are the basins we talked about, and if you look, this is an up, a close-up of where you can see Red Bluff, Corning, Orland, you see Chico, and over to the east would be more of where Paradise is. And it's not plotted on there, but you can see that there's not been a basin that has been identified there, so...
Because it appears to just be up to the foothills.
Yes.
And then, and everything above is...
It does, exactly right, exactly right. Basins are typically associated with just exactly what you said, President, is that it's associated with lowlands before it goes up into the hills. I just put this in here because a lot of people want to know about SIGMA, they've been thinking about it, they've been hearing about it, and it is going to be a regulation of people's groundwater. It is just in the beginning stages, but, you know, 20 years from now, everybody's going to be reporting on their groundwater use, everybody.
I got a silly question, but it might...
Yes, that's all right.
The rivers, the underground rivers up in the mountains, do all of them ultimately go to the valley, or do some of them just dissipate in springs, or how did...
Well, I've always told people that water runs downhill.
I'm a plumber, I know that.
Except for, except for in Southern California, where it runs towards money.
Good point.
So, the California, the Northern California, where your streams are in all the systems, some of the water, the components of water, go underground, just like you said, and they are seeking out the lowest place where they can get to. They're going to end up the same place that the surface water does, but what you lose is time. The surface water is going to run downstream quickly, and it'll just keep seeking out the tribes, the tribes, the tribes, till it gets to the river, and then the river will eventually go down Sacramento and out to the ocean, or in other parts of the state, go, go to the ocean, to the north or south of San Francisco, or into the bay. The thing, when a stream goes underground, like you're suggesting, the subterranean flow, some of it will just dissipate into the volcanics and the fractures in there, but eventually, it seeks out the lower part. And, and I get that question a lot, and so, it's not, it's not a silly question, it's a good question. You know, where is it all going and why, you know, heck, you know, we ought to be trying to capture some of this, that's what a lot of people want to know. And, you know, unfortunately, to capture it before it gets to somewhere concentrated, like the Sacramento River, or Yuba, or, you know, somewhere, it's very expensive to do that kind of capturing. So, you've got to wait till it collects somewhere where you can get, you know, the most for it. But all water will eventually end up in these, in these basins, in these water courses that run through the whole state of California. Does that help?
Yeah, and I was, I think, both of us have wells on our property.
Okay.
My neighbors, there are wells all around me, and they all, their wells are deep, and it's poor water, and it's, they don't have very much, but I am told by the person that drilled our well in the prior, that I bought from and so on, that my well is in an underground river, because it's just clear and crisp, and it's just unlimited tremendous amount of water, that's what everybody's talking about.
You're tapped into a completely different aquifer than they are, maybe.
Right.
Maybe they need to go different, deeper, excuse me, or in a different location, and it all, you know, comes down to how, how deep, where their perforations are, all of those things.
Your water rights are going to be different than mine. And that's what I was worried about, is that, because I sit on something different.
We're going to limit how much you can take.
Yeah, Ron Dykstra used to come to my property every couple of years and take samples of my water, and I don't know if they knew that I was different than everybody else around, or, or what. And I'm always concerned that they, one day, will knock on my door and say...
Or the connectivity meter and push the button, he'll say.
And so, yes, if, I was hoping that the direction is not real fast, that they will control our wells, but...
Well, as again, I don't know, I don't think you're in a basin. And so, I don't see that happening anytime soon at all. They've pretty well identified all the basins. What they haven't done is identified the hierarchy of all of them. They've, they've labeled them what they think, high, medium, low, high being basins that are critically overdrafted. And if you go back, you know, to this other slide, you know, you, you know where they are, you know where those basins are. They're critically overdrafted, they've been overusing the water, and an overdrafted basin means that you are taking out more each year than can be replenished. And so, instead of operating like a sustainable basin, where you draw the basin down, and it rains and it fills back up, draw down, fills back up, you use it like a bank account, you know, in and out. But what happens in an overdrafted basin, you're, you're drawing it down, but it only goes back up this amount. And then the next year, you draw it down some more, and it goes back only this amount. So, you have a decreasing groundwater table, and it continues to decrease till you either have a gully washer that fills it all back up, or it never does. And that's what you have in these critical basins. And that's what they're trying to do, is to get people to work together to develop a way to make those basins sustainable. Yes?
Just a comment, I called in other things in agriculture, and right now, it's a tremendous political thing going on, and Emily's probably very familiar with it, I would think, where they're trying to draw the lines on the basins and who controls... they're trying to draw the lines on the basins, and who controls what.
Right.
Whether, you know, all this, plus the personalities that want to be on the different boards that are being formed for it, and different water districts want representation. And so, right now, it's sort of like you're stirring a pot, and it's hot, and it's not going to settle down for a while. And nobody seems to know when. And of course, we have, farmers are notorious for being conservative and concerned with water rights. So the government is doing this to us, and we don't like the government. But we're going to get in there and get our piece of the action. So it's really something to watch.
I really encourage agriculture to get a seat at the table. You're talking about the formation of things called groundwater sustainability agencies, which GSA is, they're being formed in every basin.
We're exempt so far. So we don't have to worry about that right now.
Well, we, we kind of are, because that's why we can't have storage, because if we can't use it, it ends up being groundwater.
No, it has nothing to do with our storage. That's what we're talking about right now.
Well, yeah, it does. The water that flows through our system, if we can store more of it...
Well, it's different. We're talking about, these people are on wells, or they have water diverted out of the different ones, the reservoirs and everything above. But they don't, it's not bothering us up here. They don't, so far, they don't want to be any part of what we have.
Well, you're not, you're not in a basin.
Any other qualifications by the state laws that are involved.
We're, we're not in a basin. I get that.
Yeah.
Our water fills basins if we don't use it. And if they can control how much we get to keep in storage, then that's, that much more water that goes into the...
I agree. That's our big problem. So let's get along where it's...
One of our problems is the storage.
All right.
Let's go.
Back to the lady continuing.
Okay. Paradise Irrigation District's water rights. I, I don't mind being derailed because good information comes out. Butte Creek adjudication. I'm not going to get into the components of the adjudication. If you do need an overview of it, I can send you a copy of it. But suffice it to say that the adjudication of March 1940 assigned rights to everybody who was using water during that time. And it, there have been various basins that have been adjudicated in the state. Almost every basin in the Southern California has been adjudicated. Butte is another one. And that just means that a court of law has taken all of the rights who's using them, how much everybody's using, identified all the parties who are using water in a basin, and has sorted out who gets what on a priority basis. And so, many years ago, it's what, 60, 77 years ago, they decided that Paradise Irrigation District has a pre-1914 claim to 8 cubic feet per second of water. This is what we were talking about, the 8, about 3,600 gallons a minute. And it's not to exceed, where you can divert it, it's 8 cubic second feet, but 8 cubic feet per second, excuse me. But by the time it gets to where the place of use is, they accounted for conveyance losses and said it would be 4.5 CFS at the place of use. That is the first water that has to be used by the district, or counted as used by the district, because it is your oldest, oldest water right. It's a direct diversion right. And remember, I was saying some rights are storage, where you can divert it in the winter months, store it in a, in a reservoir, and use it in the summer. This is not one of those. This is a direct diversion right, that the water has to be used on a real-time basis. It can be used for 11,250 acres within the PID boundaries, and it can be expanded beyond that use. When we expand the other places of use, this will be able to be expanded as well. But the, the, this doesn't have a water right permit. You'll see that it says it's a statement of water diversion and use. And that is the, when you have a claim of right, like a riparian right, or a pre-1914 right, you have to file one of these. It's not regulated by the state of California, only to the extent that they want you to file a report on water use every year. And that is enforced by the State Water Resource Control Board. So before every June 30th, we have to file a statement of water diversion and use supplement for this diversion to say how much the district uses on a monthly basis under this claim of right. So we have different colors of water rights. This is a different color than your other rights that you have. The pre-1914 right has, I have no feeling that it's been challenged. There's no reason to believe that it's not in good standing. I don't know if, I don't mean to turn on Neil, but if you have any other feelings about whether or not we have any trouble using that much water each, each year?
No, I don't.
No.
I don't think so. I think we're...
Right. We may falter a little bit in the winter, but...
Yeah, the streams are up and, or managed now. We may not use the full portion of the waters.
But it's, it's a good claim of right. It's been recognized by a court of law. I won't say it's unchallengeable, because I don't, I think anything can be challenged, but there's no indication of that. So this is your oldest and most valuable water right.
Can you speak to, again, I just need a little clarification.
Okay.
8 cubic feet per second, but rate not to exceed 4.5 cubic feet per second at place of use.
At the place of use.
What does that exactly mean?
Okay. Where the adjudication had you diverting from was further upstream. And it said that you could take it under control here, and at the time, it was being taken down and conveyed down to irrigation. This was a, more of an irrigation right years ago. And it was, where it started into the place of use that was being served, that was what they called, when it reached the place of use. And they, they, they expected that you would have to take 8 second feet in order to get 4 and 1/2 second feet down here, based on the conveyance losses. So that's what that means.
No sense.
Okay.
We had open ditches.
You had open ditches. You had, you had a lot of losses.
Loss, yeah.
There are a lot of losses. So they, so they said, instead of just telling you that you could divert it at 4 and 1/2 up there, they recognized that in order to get 4 and 1/2 second feet down at your place of use, you were going to have to take it at a higher rate in order...
Okay. But the recognized pre-1914 appropriative right is for no greater than 4.5.
At the place of use.
At, well, that's the only reason we would take it, is to use it. So it's really not 8, 8 cubic feet per second is 4 and 1/2 that we can use. That's what's net available to us, right?
There's still carriage loss.
There's still what?
There is still carriage loss.
There's still carriage loss. It's much smaller now.
Right.
We still, we still claim certain water under this right has carriage loss.
But, but even if you had no carriage loss, you still can't take more than 4.5.
Well, I don't like to say that we don't have an 8-second foot right.
But that's the way I read this.
No. The, the adjudication says you have an 8-second foot right. And that's what you want to claim.
But don't use more than 4.5.
So wouldn't we have an argument that we've reduced the losses in our system today to get more of that allocation, that 8 CFS?
Or is it merely to our benefit because we have greater control and less loss?
Well, you have less loss because you have greater control. And, and so that is to your benefit. You know, you, you, you know, 4 and 1/2 second feet is what they expect that you will be using at the place of use. But if they limited everything, they went, someone went back to court and said, "The only thing they can take is 4 and 1/2 up there," you would get less than 4 and 1/2 at your place of use. Because as Neil said, you still are going to have some carriage losses.
Paul, look, could our place of use be outside the district if we...
No.
No, we couldn't.
No. It's designated where it has to be in the adjudication. Yeah. It, it identifies that area.
And there's no consideration for the number of points of use, huh? No.
Well, no. I mean, where you're taking under control in Butte Creek is your point of diversion.
And that's it, yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a great right.
Good.
I like, I like those types of rights. I like to be able to say that. And a lot of people don't have good rights. PID's most senior right, as I mentioned, and they've got to report it under their pre-14. So they can't, you can't just say, "Oh, we're going to report it under our permit." Instead, we have to report it under this right. The Paradise Irrigation District's second best right is the permit that it got back in 1916. Just missed the 1914 date. But in 1916, a water right application was filed, and a permit was issued. And the, and the permit had these parameters: 6,700 acre feet to build and put Paradise Reservoir in, 2,800 acre feet to build Magalia, take water year round from the creek, use it for municipal irrigation, industrial, and recreation, and use it anywhere within PID. And that permit, we've been, we've been using it. You used it to build Paradise. You used it to build Magalia. You have been using the water that way, where you diverted it all year long and, and used it under your claim of right. But we realized something back in 2006, or I'm trying to think the date, that we filed those petitions, 2007, that when we started looking at the spreadsheets that Neil was putting together, and how water was actually being used up here, is that you guys were also not just diverting to storage, you were taking water by direct diversion. Meaning, when water was flowing into Paradise, you were taking it at the same time, the same time it was flowing in. It wasn't just coming in in the winter and you using it in the summer. That's what you used to do as an irrigation district. You didn't have a big demand during the winter months. So you just let it fill up, and then everybody turned on their sprinklers and irrigated their crops in the summer. Well, when that stopped happening, you started needing more water in the winter. Or when, I should say, when the irrigation lessened and the municipal increased, you started needing more water in the winter months. And so, all of a sudden, you guys were operating by direct diversion, instead of just diversion to storage in these reservoirs. And that's not allowed under your water rights. And just so you know, you're not the only party that this has happened to.
I was just going to ask that. Surely, this has happened to all of the state.
City of Santa Cruz. City of Santa Cruz. Fallbrook Public Utility District. Just, I'm spacing right now, but many, many. Those happen to be two that I'm representing. But many have found to, to do this. And so what they had to do, and what we did on behalf of Paradise Irrigation District, got together with your general manager, and Neil, and everyone, we, we quantified what, what we'd been doing, and we applied, we filed a petition, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute, to correct that. But I, I jumped ahead of myself. Let me go through the next permit, and then we'll, we'll come right back to the petitions. But this is what this water right permit allows. And when you see it says beneficial use date December 31, 2007, that means that you told the state that by that date, you would have put all of your water to beneficial use, and you would be ready to have a license issued on it. Because right now, you just have a permit. The license is the cap of the right. It, they, it perfects the right. And when the right is perfected, they issue a license. And so this expired in 2007, and we are, we're addressing that in some petitions. And I'll, and I'll get to that. I'm sorry. I wanted to go through the rights first. It's, it's, it's hard. It's hard not to be jumping back and forth, but I'll do my best. I'm sorry if I made some confusion.
Can you explain the difference between storage and direct diversion, based on how long it, what storage requires?
Right. A storage right, which is this permit, allows for you to take water and place it into storage, and hold it for a period to use later. It isn't just 30 days. That's been a, for purposes of licensing, it is. If you keep it in there longer than 30 days, they figure you stored it, and you're going to use it later. And that's called diversion to storage.
Well, duh.
And that's what your, your permit allows. Direct diversion is when the source is flowing, and you are putting it into storage and using it at the same time, in the winter months, to run through your house, to run through this business, to run through this industrial use. All of that's happening at the same time that it's raining and water is flowing into Paradise. And that's called direct diversion. Your water right permit did not allow that. And so, we're trying to correct that.
Question?
Yes.
Are 1914 water rights allow, according to my new calculation, 3 million gallons a day? So how do you, how do you balance that, then? Is that coming into the same...
We are, it is coming in the same system. We're using, we're reporting that amount first, but we need more direct diversion than just what that allows for. That's why we've got to try to convert this right to allow direct diversion.
Exactly. But once you perfect this, we will still have that 3 million in addition to this, right?
Well, you have that first. That's your first use. And then you'll have this in addition to that.
In addition, okay.
Yeah. So the water right permit, the second one that you have, was filed in 1965. It has the same beneficial use date, and it allowed for the, storage of additional, an additional 8,800 acre feet in Paradise Reservoir. And the diversion season was not year-round on this one. It was October through May, and it allowed the same municipal industrial recreation. The right provides for the additional storage in Paradise. We had to have made use of it in 2007, which we didn't. But the big difference between this permit and the one that we just looked at, is that this permit is limited by something called Term 91, that was developed in the 1970s, that said, "Anytime the delta is out of balance, and the state and Fed projects are required to release water to meet downstream in-basin uses," that your water right permit would be curtailed. Okay? And, and it's not just you. It's everybody who came along after that time that is tributary to the delta. Well, this Term 91 makes it very difficult for people to divert water in the summer months under their water rights. But luckily, you know, this is more of a diversion to storage in the winter. And really, where you would be clipped off with Term 91 would probably be the month of May. The reason that it's never happened is that you have never diverted, you, the district, has never diverted water under Permit 16040. All diversions are being made under your other permit and your pre-1914 use. And that's just because your water use hasn't been as great to require the use of this permit.
So if we don't use this permit, and the twin tunnels go in, they can't make us, give them more water for the delta?
Boy, you are just like venturing off into a whole new realm there. I'm not going to touch the twin tunnels.
Well, the single tunnel, 8K twin.
Good. We hope they never do.
We're just not even going to get there. You know, there's so much to cover on that that we don't have time. But suffice to say, that this permit needs to be extended, because you haven't made any use of water on it, and the beneficial use date expired in 2007. So we filed an extension. And that's what I'm going to get to next.
On this one?
Yes.
Is there any benefit in our application to having recreation be part of it? Because I know, know that some lakes, Almanor, et cetera, they're able to keep their lake high for recreation purposes in the summer before they start draining. Is it any benefit that we are doing that? Is that accidental or intentional?
Well, you applied for recreation because you use it for that.
Right, we do.
But it, it isn't what drives the, I don't want to speak out of turn, but Neil, recreation doesn't drive the capacity of the reservoirs.
It doesn't allow greater retention of the water or anything?
You are, you are allowed to only store what you're allowed to store.
That's it, yeah.
And that is it. And that includes the use for recreation. But recreation is an incidental use, basically, to your reservoirs. These are water supply reservoirs.
Well, maybe when we get our new dock in, and the states dump so much money into it all.
And, and really, the big question, what we wanted to talk about, and I think this is why, Kevin, is that you're, you're going to be embarking here in the next few months as a board, looking at some things having to do with petitions. Now, we filed petitions on Permit 271. That's the first one. That was the one that was filed in 1916, and it allowed for the 6,700 acre feet in Paradise, 2,800 acre feet in Magalia, which has been, as you all know, Division of Safety of Dams has kept that at 800 acre feet, based on safety concerns. The maximum manual beneficial use that we have estimated through Neil's work, and the State Water Resources Control Board's review of Neil's work... State Water Resources Control Board's review of Neil's work and concurrence with Neil's work, is that the maximum manual beneficial use that we can claim is about 7291 acre-feet. That includes that 725 acre-feet of conservation. What this means is that we filed a petition on this permit and we said, we're done, we've perfected this right. Give us a license for 7291 acre-feet. And that was part because we had perfected it, and part because the state water board was pushing Paradise to do something. They said this was issued in 1916, it's one of our oldest permits still out there. And you either take a license on what you've done, or you start forfeiting some of the water.
Was this beneficial use calculation done during when we were conserving because of the drought years?
Not during this last drought year. We took it on a 10-year, let me get my glasses.
Average use.
We took it on a 10-year, floating 10-year use that ranged from 1998 through 2007. And I think that's the one that we used, 1998 to 2007 with a floating water year. Yeah.
So you basically used it on what it was back then before the permit expired in 2007?
Yeah. We took the best we could get before it expired.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
And there was a lot of work on the part of your engineer, Neil, because he had to keep, his spreadsheets are a work of art, and keeping track of the water and how it was used to put us in the best, and I say us, I'm considering myself part of the people here, put us in the best light in order to demonstrate the biggest amount of beneficial use we could get. And that's where we got that 7291. And so I, the petition is pending with the State Water Resource Control Board. And also, in addition to saying, hey, we're done, we've capped the use, we asked them to give us direct diversion as a method of diversion. Remember when I mentioned that we don't have direct diversion? We asked them, we said, you know, we don't, we're not asking for more water because we can't, we just needed a different method to take it, not just under storage, but also under direct diversion. And those other groups that I mentioned, they're also doing the same thing. City of Santa Cruz did it first, and, or about the same time, Fallbrook may have done it first. Then, the other thing that we're doing is adding a raw water bypass facility that you all put in. We had to name that as a point of diversion, it's another place where water is taken under control. And then finally, the last thing was the addition of hydropower as a, oh, and I have a typo there, and I severely am sorry for that.
As.
It was supposed to be hydropower as a purpose of use. And we are, we've added that into the petition. And then finally, the last thing is, we've added different lands to be added to your place of use. Instead of 11,100, which is what this permit was for, Del Oro's Lime Saddle, Paradise Pines, and Magalia districts are added to get up to the 35,000 acres. Now, I've given you guys a map that's bigger than the one that's in the PowerPoint presentation, and on there you can see the various districts. And if you need a bigger one, Neil has that, I'm sure in his office, bigger, right? Yeah, we can make bigger ones. But that is the map that accompanied the petitions. And so you can see all the points of diversion on there, where the reservoirs are, the place of use, which is known as 35,000 acres under this petition, and you can see where the Lime Saddle, Paradise Pines, and Magalia districts are. So that is pending with the state board in addition to a petition we filed on the second permit. This is the permit that you requested in 1965. Because we've used no water under it, we have to get an extension of time. So we've petitioned to add an extension of time to this to get an additional 25 years from the time they finally issue it. And what we told them that we would do during that time is to increase the storage at Paradise and to restore storage at Magalia. That's the goal. We also seek to, the amount taken from the source not to exceed 8,800 acre-feet per year. That's what the permit was issued for. And then both permits together would not exceed 18,300 acre-feet per year. The same as the other permit, we have petitioned to add direct diversion, the raw water bypass facility, and the hydropower plant. And again, the 35,000 acres, so we could use the water anywhere within that 35,000 acres. Both of those petitions have been pending since 2007 when we filed them. Not unusual. State Board has about 645 petitions pending, and I think they granted nine of them last year.
Where are we on the stack on somebody's desk?
Well, we've been told, we've gone over there a couple of times, and Kevin's been part of that, and your former general manager, Neil, we've been told that they want to clear this up. We offered to do the work for them. Neil did the calculations for them. Because, one, they don't have time, they don't have the staff to do it. And they agreed that we would do that, they also agreed that we would write the terms, and we've done all of that, and we're waiting for them to provide us with a draft license for Permit 271.
When did they come to all these agreements? Three months ago, two years ago?
Well, wouldn't be, I hesitate the, I shouldn't have used the word agree. They nodded that that's, you know, something they could do, they're not going to put it in writing. But they, it's been probably...
It was pre-drought.
It was, no, no, when we went up there the last time.
It was April or May?
April or May of 2017.
Oh, so just recently, yeah, right.
Well, recent, in water board time.
All of these maybe agreements were back in '07, they were...
You're right with me on water board time, because that is, you know, they run on a completely different time clock. Yeah, recent.
In perpetuity, or there's a term?
25 years.
I've asked for 25, we've asked for 25 years, which is a...
To meet these conditions, yeah, right.
25 years from the time they issue it, yeah. So they don't issue it for another five years, 25 from there.
And that's the license duration, is that what?
No, no, excuse me, that is the extension of time in order to enlarge Paradise and raise Magalia back up. The extent, the, good point, though, the license, once issued, it's good in perpetuity. You don't need to do anything else, it caps it, it gives you that water right, and it is always your right as long as you abide by the terms and the conditions of the license, and as long as you put the water to beneficial use.
Will that be in writing?
That is in, that is in every permit that is turned into a license.
I've read that there's been talk that the state may tinker with the pre-1914 water rights.
Yeah, they've been threatening it.
You're right, Dan, I mean, things can happen.
Well, and when they're talking about tinkering, I think what you're referring to is during the drought, they were trying to subordinate pre-1914 rights. And that's what I think you meant by tinkering. They're not looking to take them away, they were looking to say, yeah, you've got a senior right, but you know, you haven't been using it.
You've got more than you need, so we want to share.
And so, there's been that discussion. But one of the big things I wanted to talk about tonight, because this is coming up for you guys, is environmental review for pending petitions. The petitions that we filed, yes, they've been pending with the state water board. And as Kevin mentioned, years ago, you, back in 2008, 2009, you guys started an environmental process, and you hired a firm to do the environmental document. They got as far as issuing the notice, and there it is, 2010, you guys circulated a notice of preparation, and you said that you were going to be processing these petitions. As a public agency, Paradise Irrigation District is responsible for doing its own environmental document. So you circulated that, and then during the public comment period of that circulation, you received comments from these parties. And what I mean by comments is, most of the comments were directed at, we need more information, we think there could be impacts to fish and wildlife, that was from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, we want to understand that we have no impacts to cultural resources, and we want to make sure that our prior rights are taken care of. So, variety of different things in the public comment period. After consultation with the state board staff, PID decided then to make some amendments to their original 2007 petitions. And instead of doing what was said in this 2010 circulation, we decided to go ahead and go to license on that first one. When we first circulated this in 2010, we thought we could get an extension of time on both of them. And the state said, no way, you better take a license on that earlier one. And so that was what we made the change on, and that's why, it's not the reason why the environmental got delayed. It got delayed because of this, but also because the political climate was starting to change, and the state water board wasn't processing these things. We didn't want to go forward with it and then have it turn stale, and then also, the drought hit after that, and then nobody was working on anything. When I say nobody, I'm talking about the state water board. So we prepared this detailed documentation of beneficial use, that's what I was talking about, that Neil prepared for you all. And we got concurrence preliminarily from the state water board. And the group called De novo Planning Group is your environmental consultant that you guys retained, and they are revising the project description to meet what I described tonight. They're also going to be meeting with these environmental groups to see whether additional studies are needed, because the other ones might be stale, or whether we can just touch them up, or whether no new studies are needed. And so that's where they are right now, De novo Group is doing that. The next step for you all is PID is supposed to recirculate a notice of preparation of the new EIR. They said it's proposed for the final quarter of 2018. The state water board staff was nodding their head, and hopefully, you know, they'll go along with us. State board is supposed to issue a public notice of the petitions. That's something different than a public notice of the environmental document. This is a public notice of the petitions, and they said that they could get that out the mid to end of 2018. And it's basically a notice that they give to all the public regulatory agencies, parties like Fish and Game, US Fish and Wildlife, National Marine Fisheries Service. They give notice that you are seeking changes under your rights, and those people have a chance to comment or file protests against the petitions. We're hoping that PID can adopt the EIR in 2019, and that the state water board could issue the permits in 2019. And basically, that schedule is, you know, it's ambitious, and it's if we don't get caught up in another drought and lose staff, and this would be light speed. This would be moving at light speed.
And we're assuming that none of these other agencies that objected before, or groups, are going to object again to this and want an environment?
Oh, they will, they will.
And isn't that going to slow the process up?
Yes and no, they will. None of those parties had anything that was insurmountable. They have to comment so that they will have standing at the state water board during the hearing process. And so sometimes even if they don't have anything to really complain about or have issues with, they will file a protest to have standing. Emily, I guess, you know, you would probably agree with that, I, I mean, you have to...
Preservation of their right.
It's a preservation of their right to have standing. And so those people will probably, you'll probably get more protests, more comments. That is not unusual at all, and that's what the process is. This is the project that we're doing, this is how we're going to mitigate for impacts, this is where we can't mitigate for impacts. Tell us what your problem is, maybe we can change our mitigation to fit it, and if not, you as a board would have to adopt a statement of overriding consideration.
Can any of the water districts or agencies that want to have our water south come up with anything here, or is it just the sphere of influence to where our water's coming from?
It has to be someone who has standing, either by saying that you have impacts to the environment, or saying that you are impacting their prior rights.
So somebody can't say, you're going to supply less water to the delta, therefore we have an objection with it?
Well, they can't get your water, it's your water right.
Well, they get it eventually, they're getting it now, is my point. And can they, can they object to us perfecting a permit? Let me, I'm just asking to be able to talk.
No, go ahead.
By interrupting what you're... Can they, I lost my train of thought now, can they affect this permit application by objecting to that because we would be doing harm to properties that are not in our sphere of influence here, but that are directly affected by how much water we don't get to keep and use here that goes south?
No, they have to have a direct connection to what you are seeking to do.
That was my question. So the people in Sacramento cannot object to an environmental issue?
What people?
Oh, people like farm agencies that control 58% of our water in the Mid Valley and...
I'm not following what you're...
The people who want the water for the delta, the people, the people that are not in our sphere of influence here. That was my question.
Well, this water flows downstream.
Yes, it does.
And it flows down through the Sacramento River and goes downstream to other parties. Someone would have to have a prior claim of right to challenge an impact to them. We didn't really get any of those in the first time around, I'm not sure that we're going to get any prior right impacts. We're going to probably have environmental concerns, fishery. It would be your number one thing.
This list is going to...
Not fishery in the delta, fishery in your, in your stream. And so I guess I would say that it probably would not be entertained by your council to have someone protest who didn't have standing. When I say by your council, would recommend to you that we respond to them that they don't have standing. So, but you are going to get protests, and they'll probably be associated with impacts to fisheries up here. You're taking water out of the stream and, you know, they just know it's bad. So, no matter what it is, yeah, I'm sorry.
A lot of what Cliff is worried about, in a practical matter, can't happen because we have the water rights, that's what we're talking about here, is securing. Below us, the water rights cover everything as you go down, different districts have rights to...
Absolutely.
And diversions that go back to pre-1914.
They do.
And everything else. And Butte Creek itself has environmental groups that are very active in protecting Butte Creek back to its origin.
Well, yeah, they filed protests here.
Against riparian rights and downstream flows being diminished by water usage upstream.
Well, we, we're, our watershed is Little Butte Creek that flows into Butte Creek. And then if you're going to diversions that are water-sold south, most of the ag irrigation districts in the valley sell water in a dry year in Southern California, and they idle land, and the landowner, I don't know how they share it out, it depends on the market, it flows up and down, what the water's worth. And they make sure that they don't use the same fields more than, I think it's one or two years.
They rotate.
They rotate the fields, I'm not sure how frequently.
Yeah, but they protect their water rights that way, so those districts still own the water. The big fish down south can't come in unless they have a pocketbook to buy the water rights from that district. They don't have anything to it. So they're able to sell it as a cash crop, depending on the year and the demand and all that. So this year, it looks like the demand's going to be great. So, it's all protected by these long-term water rights, and Dustin used to mention the water rights that go back, otherwise, that they were trying to break some of the water rights up here that we have protecting this system. But it's, it all comes down to, oh, come on. The saying is, people drink whiskey, but they fight over water in California.
Whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting.
Yeah, drinking water's for fighting.
Well, there are a lot of very complicated... Well, there are a lot of very complicated agreements, priority systems, and the water that is excess in the system to you, goes to somebody else downstream of you. You have a right in the system and a priority that is protected by your priority. No one can file a protest and take that away from you based on something that they want. It's, you're protected by the priority system with regard to your appropriative rights, and the pre-1914 right is a court adjudication. So, those are, those are how you're best protected. And if somebody alleges something in the petition process of the public notice of the EIR or the petitions, you will be stating correctly, through your council when they're responding, that it is not germane to the issues raised in the petitions. And the only thing that people can file a protest against is the action that is proposed by the petitions. They cannot file a protest on the underlying claim of right. And that's a, that's a-
It's a big one.
...big thing, and districts are using that all the time. Am I going way too long?
No, you're fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, just to kind of circle this all back around, because we're talking about protest of the EIR.
Mm-hmm.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, our biggest exposure to the change that could come about through the CIR process would be the increase of the requirement of a release.
Bypass.
So, right now-
Bypass.
...we really used to have CFS that we're required to. If that release requirement goes up, I think that's what we've talked about from our standpoint, is that's our biggest exposure. And that's the environmental impact-
Right.
...we would be affecting.
We're going to be looking at, well, De novo will be looking at your exposure on that. Because right now, Kevin's right, you have a bypass that means, at all times you're diverting, so much has to go by the facilities and go on downstream. If Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game decides that that's not enough, and you negotiate something higher, that means that it takes longer to fill your system by releasing that, that water. And that would probably be one big thing that would happen. But that isn't, that doesn't come about because of the people down in the delta or Sacramento.
That's based on the environmental-
That's a regulatory agency.
And we're on a tributary that's very highly regulated, and is very, you know, precious to the state of California.
Maybe we can give them a little bit of that 4.5, or that difference between 8 and 4.5.
The loss, the carriage loss.
You're saying they can have the invisible water, so.
A nuclear, invisible.
Well, I just, I wanted to finish up in the next steps, just, that's kind of where we're going. We're waiting to hear from the State Water Resource Control Board staff on a draft license. And Ben Ritchie, who is your De novo Planning Environmental Consultant, is working, working on the project description, but with reason, wants to have that in hand before he finalizes it, to make sure that we've got what we think we have.
Just an update too on that, is that we do have a contract with him, and I believe the contract amount is about $350,000. He's used approximately 270, so there's additional amount on that contract still outstanding. There's going to be a change that's going to need to take place within that contract, because there's going to be more work. But the direction we gave him is to continue working under that contract to discover what the additional changes are going to be, so that when he comes back, he has the additional changes for the board. So, he's working under his current contract that was established when he did the first studies, and then, he will then come back for the change.
I've got a copy of that environmental impact report. It's available to any of the directors. All you have to do is ask Kevin for it. And you'll soon find that the front part of it needs to be changed, because it's a description of the district that's changed somewhat. And some of the rest of it will be De novo, but you will find out about frogs and all the different animals that are in the creek, so.
And the project description itself is changed, is going to need to be changed, because the petitions are different than what was filed back then.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you're right. That's, and they're going to use that as much as they can. They don't want to reinvent the wheel, but the agencies dictate whether or not something is stale. So, that's kind of wraps up what I had to say. I just put this at the end for you to read at your leisure, just who we are, just so you can say, "Well, who is she, and what does she know?" And you might still say that after you read this, but I, I appreciate having the opportunity to work with the district. It's been a long haul. It's sad that this is the way the bureaucracy runs, but also, it's kind of been good in some ways, that it took a little longer, because we found out some things that we might not have known back in 2007, that are going to benefit the district that we've made corrections for. So, there's pluses and minuses. Are there any other questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
Maybe because you're in this industry, maybe you know a little bit more about it. And I may be, you know, not thinking this outright, but the state, or the voters passed that initiative that increased taxes to support the building of places like Site's Reservoir, okay, for additional storage. And now, the state is saying that none of those passed muster, and they've come up with some trumped-up reasons as to why they can't get any of the funding. Do you think, in your opinion, that it has anything to do with the lack of funding for the twin tunnels, and the effort to maybe take some of that money for what might be called a beneficial use? Because they're not going to use it to fund places like Site's Reservoir, and then that becomes the funding for at least one of those tunnels? Do you think she's-
Are you chafing this?
I was going to say, do you think she might really know the, I don't think anybody knows that.
Well, even if I did, I wouldn't say it in a public meeting. And I think that those reservoirs aren't probably the best locations for water, but they're kind of all we had. And I think some of the better locations for water aren't being looked at, because politically, they're probably-
Impossible to ever achieve, yeah.
To achieve. But they said, I know the same thing you know. I read the articles too, about why Site's Reservoir didn't qualify for the Prop 1 money, and what different pieces it didn't have that would allow it to use the Fed money. They've reduced the twin tunnels quite a bit.
No, I know that, but they've also denied funding for any of the applications.
Well, the Temperance Flat Reservoir was another one, and the enlargement of Los, not Los, San Luis, which was a, was a one that was being considered. I think we need to build reservoirs here, and I think we're going to be hitting ourselves over the head with a hammer that we didn't do it sooner.
It's the politicians that need to hit over the head with a hammer.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I was just wondering if that's where the funding is-
Real people.
I don't know. I can't say if that's where it went or not. I do know the same that you did, that they've, they've, all of a sudden, they've thrown a lot of-
Roadblocks.
Roadblocks up against those three reservoir sites. And, and it's a shame. But, we're looking at a Temperance Flat for some, we're looking at Temperance Flat for some potential, well, not, they're not potential, but a group of people who are looking to build it independent. And it's a, it's a great reservoir. It doesn't really help the delta. It helps the Central Valley, some of the delta. But, yeah, it's, I tell you, as long as we're alive, they're going to be fighting about water. There is no easy answer. And, and there's a lot of people who don't want to resolve it. Yeah, yes.
Doug and I went to a meeting a couple of years ago, when this first started, in Chico, and they're trying to explain the money for the proposition. And the local Republican politicians who support Site's Reservoir, and most of the people there supported it. The only thing we found out is that the way it was written up is there's environmental things in it that actually control most of the money. And that's been from the very beginning. And when they got through explaining it, everybody was going, "Well, what's going to happen?" And their term answer was, "Well, four or five years from now, guys, if we play our cards right, we might have a chance." So, the politics is going on now. And the chance we're working against is environmental groups that have their own acts to govern.
Well, environmental lobby in this state is very powerful.
It's huge.
Very powerful.
One last brief question.
Yes.
LAFCO, they're probably not a concern at all, are they, in regards to Chico?
Well, I think LAFCO, you will have to deal with them on the expansion of your sphere of influence.
Right.
And, you know, obviously, they have their own job to do to determine whether or not the sphere should be-
Expanded, yeah.
Expanded. But hopefully, we'll have done all of our homework before that application is made, because it tends to go with the water rights, and what the land use is, how the land use had been provided for, you know, in the initial LAFCO plans. So, I don't see it as being a roadblock, but it is something you're going to have to go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, for that. Anything else, Kevin? No? Okay. Great. I'm sorry to take so much of your time up.
Oh, thank you, Paula.
It's not an easy subject. It's either, it's either a five-minute or a two-hour.
Thank you very much.
You're under two hours, so thank you, Paula.
I'm under two, yeah. And Kevin, if you, it would be all right unless you guys need me further to leave. So, I don't need to be approved. If you do have any questions for me, Kevin can tell you how to, you can email me directly. You can call at any time.
Ward's, oh, Ward had to leave.
Yeah, he had to leave.
Anybody in the audience have a question briefly, before, let's, let's try that briefly. Go ahead, Robin. You go.
Oh, do I stand up, or does she stand up?
If it's real short, go ahead and stay there. If it's long, then go up.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah.
Well, stand up then, here.
Then come on up to-
I wasn't sure who was supposed to be. I failed the comments there. Let me get the paper out.
Hi, I'm Robin Hefman. And it's been a long time since I've looked at the initial study. I do remember it from way back. And a lot of things have happened since then. I suppose the biggest thing is the potential sale and interest that PID may have in the De Sabla, PG&E Centerville project area. And I don't know if that is going to complicate this petition.
It shouldn't affect it in our application right now, I don't think, should it?
It's not connected at all to that.
The only connection I see are the maps. It looks like there's overlapping areas.
And there might be some overlapping place of use. But as far as the base rights that we're petitioning under, they're not affected by other rights held. Are you talking about PG&E?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's unaffected by that, and it's not going to be based on that. The state is not going to hold up action on PID's rights in, you know, waiting for something to happen on the PG&E ones. They both may cover the same place of use. And if something is going to be done to purchase or somehow get those rights, you know, that will have to be disclosed. And it's not, it's pretty transparent. It's all public information.
Does that answer your question, Robin?
Well, they're overlapping watersheds, and so-
Right.
...seems like they might be conflicting. I mean, say someone from Washington State buys it, they're going to definitely be worried about whose rights to the water in the watershed.
Well, people from Washington State wouldn't be able to use that water. The water is only able to be appropriated where PG&E has it now. And it can only be used for the purposes that PG&E has under its water rights now. And it can only be taken from the source that PG&E has its rights to now. So, someone in Washington might well buy it, but they can't change those things without going through the water process like we are, which is a public process. But they can't move the water from here up to there.
Maybe they want to use it for hydro power, something like that.
See, but again, that wouldn't, shouldn't affect us.
If they want to use it for hydro power, they could well do that. It's a non-consumptive use. And it's just where, as you know, you have a hydro power plant here, where it runs through the turbines, and it returns itself to the creek. Again, that would probably, it may require them to make some changes to their right, or whoever ends up with PG&E right.
Del Oro wrote a letter last time, and so, I looked at that again. And it seems really controversial. I mean, the new lines are all their territory, and I don't understand why, why go there? You know, why ask for permits in, in Del Oro's area? So, I can't remember why, if you could briefly state. Because you go to all the trouble for an EIR, costs, who knows, a million dollars, and then you've got this controversy. So, why expand the map so much in the northerly direction, in the limesaddle direction?
I can answer that. Yeah, currently, currently, we actually deliver water to Del Oro, and we have no right to put the water up there. So, we have to do water exchange through our, our-
Right.
...well, right now. With, with having the place of use changed to where it's deliverable through Del Oro, we have the opportunity for them to take water from us in lean years, and with them have failing wells, and any type of water issue that we would have the availability to sell or to transfer water to them.
So, it'd benefit them.
It's mutually beneficial.
Did you understand what he just said? We do have a swapping agreement with them.
And that agreement has occurred since that letter was written in 2007?
We, we've had a wheeling agreement with them, but since 2011, we've delivered emergency water to them in '13, I believe. And in that, we delivered 100 acre feet, I believe, and we had to pump 100 acre feet out of our well just because of that, even though we didn't really need to pump 100 acre feet out of our well.
If they complain too much, we'll just cut them off.
But you're expanding the lines. That's the problem.
That's a valid, that's a valid question.
Yeah.
And then, just to add, the place of use is being expanded to accommodate those types of emergency equipment down. And it's not unusual for districts and cities and other public agencies that are connected like this, to have overlapping places of uses to accommodate that, and to allow for more flexibility in wheeling the water around. Most of the districts in and around the city of Ucataia have that type of a system, where they each name each other their places of use, so that they can operate under those agreements. And I think the Del Oro letter that I think you're referring to, when they commented on the EIR, on the notice of preference, again, for standing, but not objecting to the underlying ability to serve each other with water.
Okay.
I didn't see it that way, but I don't, I don't blame them for writing a letter so that they would have standing, because they are involved in having their lands named as the place of use.
And then, if I understand it right, the rest of the land, which is all the way to the valley, towards Bu College, all the way down, and just a huge area of land on the fingers of the canyon, which isn't even useful, most of it, for cattle grazing. It's so steep. So, by having this more land, we can ask, we can claim a larger water right? Is that what I heard?
No.
So, why expand into such-
Why expand in such unusable land?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure why it was drawn that way, but I-
Originally, it was drawn, it was originally drawn for wells in the valley, that the thought was to, that we might have to, that that might be a drought supply. Those with Sigma and all the other stuff, I think, have kind of dried up. And especially with, with our current water production, that's kind of a dried up issue. But it's just a sphere. It's just, it's, it's a land, it's a, it's a dot on a map, and it doesn't mean that that's where our water is going to be flowing to. It's still a LAFCO issue even after that, to annex those lands into the district. But right now, we were just trying to take kind of a global view of the whole area. But I believe that the original thought was to kind of go down into the valley in case there was valley wells that we were going to use for, for drought supply.
And you can't serve water down there unless those lands are annexed. And that's a public process for LAFCO.
Okay.
And they would have to also probably have the EIR associated with the infrastructure, and the tanks, and the conveyance facilities that would be needed to get water to any place from those lands.
So, thank you. That's all I had to look for, just saying.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Good question.
John Heinecke proposed that we go down there and have a large well, and bring it up Beal Road to the district for water use, and that's- up Beal Road to the district for water use, and that's how the bottom part of this thing got expanded, just like Kevin was saying, he was the director involved at the time. It's been largely forgotten since then, until I saw the map tonight, and probably when the board gets around to reviewing this, you, we may change the boundaries.
We may change the boundary in Alaska, they have a different, you know, they have.
Twist on it, too, sure.
You did pique my interest, I do have one more quick question for you. In the PG&E and the Miocene Canal and the water rights, did I understand you to say that if we divert the water to another use, that we would have to apply for additional rights?
No, I said that you may have to file a petition on the existing rights if you're changing something that the rights don't provide for. I don't know what they provide for yet, I don't know. I have not spent.
I think what she's saying, if we got the Miocene and wanted to use it up here, that's a change.
Well, and that's currently what we're looking at, is that not correct?
Yeah, it would require not a new right, sir, it would require a petition, just like the petition that you're filing on yours.
That would take years to perfect again, huh?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, before we get, before we get ahead of ourselves, we're gonna look at what the.
Yeah, because this, I mean, that's, what you said is really crucial, because we're just assuming that if they were to give us that watershed, that we would be able to use it, and you just said we can't, without certain.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Well, exactly.
That'll be the due diligence.
It's not a guarantee.
It's a twenty, twenty-year process.
And if you're looking to buy them, right, as soon as you're gonna be looking at what that water right allows for and where it's supposed to be used.
Right.
I would hope that we change it.
I just assumed that it was already a given, that we could have it if they gave it to us, so I'm glad you pointed that out.
Mr. President, can we have a?
Break.
Break for the use of the necessary.
Well, why don't we, are we, everybody done on this topic? I guess we are. Thank you very much, we will take a break. Thank you, Paula.
I have a very helpful.
Very helpful.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
You wanna talk, Ken? So you have the staff and bill reports. Keith and Jim are both here for another agenda item, but they're also here to answer any questions on these. I know that you guys have asked that they be here on occasion.
Yes.
And so there, this is now your time, if you have some of those questions that you had from previous meetings, and we're maybe waiting to talk to them about them, now's the time. They also put in here a, a report, basically like year-end report.
Can you keep up with that? We're trying to get through this, we wanna go home in five minutes, so we're just.
We're not doing a staff and bill report just yet then, right?
No, we are, he, we're, Kevin is talking, kinda, yeah.
Right there. So Keith kinda put together a year-end report of kinda totaling everything for the year. So if you have any questions on that, and then Jim put together kind of a memo about the Firefly replacement proj, project, where we're at cumulative, and where we see where we're going with that, and just basically a kind of a synopsis of that whole process, too, so.
It starts at sixty-six.
Is this total feet of pipe put in, or total feet of pipe in the system?
That's, within the system, those are.
Because I was wondering why you're still putting in as best as cement pipe and.
Yeah, because we, we had that last month.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
Yeah, that's been in there, but.
Staff is first.
Now, I had kind of a silly question on page seventy, if you, if I might ask. I would assume that the, this is a history, leaks history, I would assume that all these leaks are within our system, not on people's properties, not private properties, it's our mainline system.
Mainline.
Correct, and I just.
Only if you have a mainline, not a service line mainly.
Oh, okay, got it.
If you have a main, mainline.
Yeah. And I don't.
We don't really have an accurate record of leaks on the other side of the meter yet, we just have assumptions.
Yeah.
Which is hard to base a dollar value on.
Customer service reports request, I mean, folks call in because they have a leak and they're not sure where it is, and we go out to determine.
Right.
If it's on our side of the meter, half a meter, or on the customer's side, we can, we can get close with that, you know, we, we have an idea. How many, maybe even in some cases, we're talking about how many gallons, how much water was lost through that leak.
Yeah, but that could have been an open garden hose or.
That's right, it's impossible to tell what's a leak and what's not.
Right.
I would, because I know we had this conversation, I would like to know how many verifiable bona fide water leaks that we had downstream in the meter.
Right. What we can definitely tell is abnormal water use, so if you have, because we track, you can see that, when you look on a scale figure report in the graph, you can see.
There's a spike.
Any services doing normal. And then if you see continuous water use, let's just say, because we measure it in two feet on that particular chart, so if you have five cubic feet each hour, and then you'll see it in, it shows eight in this particular hour, and then five, five, nine. So you know that above that five, they're using water, so, but that doesn't mean that they're leaking, which means that they have something open and it's continuous water use, so we identify it as continuous water use or as abnormal water use.
Yeah.
Then they get to determine, and sometimes we help, if it's a leak or if it's a garden hose that needs to be shut off, or if it's.
Or somebody who just uses a lot of water like me.
Why do you care, as long as they pay for it? No, I'm just kidding, yeah. And fortunately, I was the beneficiary, you didn't hear this because you weren't here, but about two months ago, I think it was, we had, I had a leak, and I got a contact, and we fixed it. But boy, my, my usage just went straight up, so.
Yeah, and sometimes.
And I paid for it, too.
Doesn't go dramatic increases, sometimes we see a quarter of a gallon per minute or so, that's really hard to find.
Yeah, mine was a gusher.
Accumulates to a lot of water over that period of time.
Yeah.
That's, and that's a leak in the toilet right there, sometimes you can't tell.
Yeah.
Well, I wanna know, so we can have you guys come out and fix Dan's water leak next time in Churkam.
I got my wife, she dug it up, so.
Anyway, I thought it was very thorough report.
It is.
I don't have any questions on it. I do have a question on the treatment.
We can't answer those.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna ask Kevin.
I had, I had a question on it. On your chart here on pipeline installation history, oh, let's see, seventy-one. Most of that pipeline, would that, it looks like it was all, most of it was contracted out back then, is that correct?
No, no, that particular one there, Mark, that's, that's, that's district.
Oh, that's contracted.
We have a contractor.
That's contracted. Okay, right.
Seventy-four.
So these are, okay, so they're, they're two different charts here.
That is, that's just a contractor install chart.
Okay, okay.
First being generated to show the, the footages per year of contract.
By contract, okay, so I guess.
And that type is conveyed to us.
Right.
And then we take all the responsibility of it.
Okay.
Nevertheless, that's just as in states, that's contractor install.
Okay, so, so.
Is that very inventory?
Right, so, so back then, in let's say 2006 or whatever the, the highest years are there, what was our crew size then? What was?
Two thousand six.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at these, these.
Well, I can, let's go back, let's go back further. In, when I came on in nineteen ninety-two, it was the year that truck, we bought that truck that we'll get to, we're replacing now, wanting to replace that vehicle.
Right.
We got a bank a buck out of that from nineteen ninety-two. That is when the crew increased by six people in nineteen ninety-two, and roughly about seven field workers.
Okay.
It almost doubled in nineteen ninety-two. When you look at those charts, you'll see that ninety-two through most of the two thousands, you'll see that big increase in that pipe instance.
Yeah.
And you'll see the big charts, the six hundred-plus leaks that we were repairing hours long in the early nineties.
Right.
Because the system was literally falling apart in places. So, and that's how, that's what's so much about that chart, you see that big spike with all those mainline leaks.
Right.
And then you also see years to follow where that pipeline replacement increased and those leaks started to fall.
Right.
Because we were getting rid of the worst of the worst. So to answer your question, less, the last few years, which you guys are here now are aware of, and that's why, and thank you, we just hired three more utility workers to try to get it back up to where we always were in my career.
Uh-huh.
That, other than the, the last four or five years, it's been like that since about nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
Because they had a very small crew prior to that.
Okay.
But as, but they didn't have the problems back in, say, the seventies and eighties that they experienced in the late eighties and the early nineties, and from what those charts you see, they just exploded.
Right, okay. Yeah, yeah, it does, thank you very much, yeah, that's right.
I might add something to that, too, and I know if you agree on this, but it's something that we should never overlook, in my opinion. You see some pretty big footages right there in certain years, and I just wanted everybody to be mindful, because it's a big, big deal, that those weren't necessarily in service in those years, okay? They were installed water mains, they might have had water in them, they may not have had water in them until the next year, or perhaps even the year after before they were pulled in service. So we looked at that years ago and said, we really need to get these things in service quickly and get out of these neighborhoods. Literally, three years in one neighborhood is too long to be there.
Wow.
We need to get these water mains installed and, and working, it doesn't do any good to leave an old leaky, in-poor-shaped water main functioning with the brand in one extra year. There's no purpose in that.
Right.
So we changed that process, and, and I think, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that, so that going forward, you look at that and go, well, you didn't get twelve thousand feet in, you got five thousand feet in. Yes, but we have five thousand feet of workable water main in, in service water mains.
Good point, yeah.
That's a huge deal.
So on page seventy-seven, you have average cost for all leaks. Are we missing a legend there, 'cause the red line is costs, are we talking costs of gallons, costs of dollars?
Dollars.
Dollars, so. Where do I?
It's left, it's the left one, the left.
The one on the left is what?
Dollars.
Hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars?
Hundreds.
Hundreds.
Per, per leak.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so we had ninety-four leaks, and each leak cost us three hundred and, what's that, twenty, twenty-five bucks? Three twenty-five?
Yeah.
Three fifteen?
Something.
So in nineteen ninety-seven.
Three twenty-five.
In nineteen ninety-seven, then, one hundred and.
Oh, sorry.
Fifty leaks cost us three hundred dollars each?
No, sorry, over here, seven hundred dollars. This is the dollars, right, this is the dollar column?
That's the dollar column.
Yeah. So the number of leaks on the right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's your dollar column.
Correct.
That's your number of leaks.
So we had, we had three hundred and twenty-five leaks at an average cost of seven hundred dollars per leak, is that what it's saying?
Two thousand seventeen to ninety-four.
Ninety-four leaks.
Sorry, a hundred.
Ninety-four.
Oh, gotcha. Ninety-four leaks at seven hundred each, yeah.
Average, average, right.
I see.
Got it, okay.
We've collapsed a lot of times over the years, and you see some of those spikes there, and you'll look at some of those and you'll say, well, geez, it costs seven hundred dollars and we had ninety-four leaks, but then maybe a few years back, it averaged seven hundred dollars a leak and we had a hundred and thirty-seven. A lot of that depends on where the leak was.
Yeah, sure.
They're in the pavement, we're out on business street, we've gotten rid of a lot of those mains, we're talking five people to go out and to get, to do a job, ragging in the middle of the street, versus a side road somewhere where maybe we only have to send three, maybe a side of the main, it's off main, if you don't have the asphalt replaced across, so on and so forth, so it all depends on where they're located. Having that vacuum these days compared to the old days and being able to get pinpoint and go right down to a leak versus a backup going out has an effect on that also. So that's why those change, a lot of it depends on where it is we're working and where we're data, as far as the total cost to fix that leak, to repair it, close it up, and, and repair that asphalt later in the year.
Speaking of that, how's that new leak finder working?
We're going to find that, we've got training on it tomorrow. We have a data logger, the software's all downloaded, we're ready to go. The reps for the company will be here tomorrow, and when we start flushing on the twenty-sixth, then about two and a half or so weeks after that, we'll start, we're gonna drop back and start doing leak detection in the areas that we flush.
Excellent.
You gonna ask her yet whether or not it's legal?
Well, if you don't mind me adding something to this, and Kevin has the skills to, to kinda figure this out, I would say that there's probably a bit of influence, when you look back where Keith was talking about how many were changed and the low rate, while wages might have been a little lower then, but I think, too, that most of the leaks that Keith is talking about in current, those years, were during, done during working hours. A lot of our leaks now, and that's why, I mean, we see ninety-four of them, a lot of those are on emergency standby callouts, so there's a bit of, a bit of cost increase there, I'd say, that would affect that cost.
Sure, you got overheads and so on, yeah.
So, but Keith's absolutely right, especially with some of the paving standards that we have to go to.
So we should see, you'll be proactive now, instead of reactive, we should see a lessened cost per leak repair then?
We could, in fact, see that, absolutely, and that's a goal.
That, that one chart I have in there for you, and I think I have it in there monthly for you, the PB, the Hollyview leak, the old, it falls apart, it gets brittle over time, there was lawsuit after lawsuit in the eighties over that. A lot of those are overtime costs, because I can attest to, they break at four o'clock. And, and. It's almost never during the day. Geez, when they go, it's in the middle of the night and when a whole leak breaks.
They just catastrophically fail without any warning.
It breaks, and there's no doubt what you're dealing with in most cases, yes. Kevin? I got two, I had a gal tell me yesterday that the water in her had turned brown, and she wanted to know if we were flushing pipes, and I said, I didn't know, but I, she lives in the upper part of the district, I don't know exactly where, but she was getting brown water in all the pipe. It did clean up after a while, I said, well, probably they were working on it somewhere, but. Well, it, it could have been dependent on where it was, but no, the flushing hasn't started, but we do get those calls once in a while where people, for whatever reason, just experience a little bit of clogging, a little bit of dirty water. Yes, if we've been in there and maybe had to throttle the main down or shut it down, people will experience that, but we've also had those calls, because usually the treatment plant feels those calls, they'll call us, hey, you guys working on Graham Road, are you working on Billy, or have you been there in the last twenty-four hours? And we'll say yes or no. And oftentimes, it's no, but they'll do, get a little bit of radar screen, and people will see some, some dirty water, aesthetically, it just doesn't look very, it could be for a, it could be for a few reasons.
Also, when you have a dead leg, and you have low usage in an area seasonally, then when you do go to use one of those spigots, you're gonna get that.
Yes.
There's no way around it, unless you tie in and don't have a dead leg anymore.
Right. I have a meter for the cemetery district is a customer, and I'm having a break in the line, I'm fixing on the customer's side, but the little sending unit had fallen down in it, and the rubber thing on the top, on the top, it was up, laying down, so I put it back in, but there's no way for, I tried to put the sending unit in, but is that sending unit still working even though it's disassembled there?
Yes, so we, we found that that.
They're actually amazingly decent cases.
We called a mustard cap, and that was a connector that we, they were suggesting when they put the datematic system in, that that MIU meter interface unit needed to be, had the antenna up near the top of the lid of the meter box and in place for it to accurately read out and to do its thing. Well, we've since found that that is actually not the case, we, we have meters covered by, you know, six, eight inches of base rock.
Still sending.
And they're still.
Interesting.
Good to know.
Now, some of them, we do have troubles with, in fact, Keith and I went to a customer's house, and he ended up putting about a five-eighths or three-quarters inch lid on his meter box and he ended up putting about a five-eighths or three-quarters single lid on his meter box, cause it was in the driveway, and couldn't figure out...
That, that cost a little...
So we go over there with a handheld, it's working, but it's not reporting. That's working, but it's not reporting. And then we went over there, and when Keith and I went over there...
No wonder it's not...
So, we, we solved that. Generally speaking, they'll report under...
He didn't, I wonder... Well, I, I never got around to calling the office about it, or even telling the cemetery people, cause I've turned it off again. But I thought, well, that's curious, I wonder if it works, that's all.
Yeah, they'll, but now, if, 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 the new, uh, MIU doesn't have the actual, um, ability to snap into...
Well, I couldn't get it to go back again.
It, it doesn't have the same connection.
Nothing to be worried about. On page seventy, I noticed that the percentage of number of leaks, and then we've got an uptake now, where we're getting something. What, is that the volume we're losing, or is that the...
It's amount of, amount of leaks, not seventy.
On page seventy, it goes up.
Seems like that line should not be rising, it should be flat.
Yes, and, yes, it, it's showing a little bit, I mean, where did I have, sixty-four, over sixty-four main lines?
Cause predominantly, they're down here.
That, that's not, that's not the leaks though.
No, what, or, is, is that the lost water line, or what is that line?
It's just a trend line showing...
Trend line, yeah.
It's just a trend line showing the amount of leaks.
Are you talking about the black line?
The black line.
Yeah.
It's a trend line.
It's an upside, yeah, it's an upside, Bill.
Huh?
It's an upside.
It's an uplink in leaks.
I mean, in the bottom of that...
If it goes farther, it'll start turning back down.
Yeah, I mean, it could vary.
But we're under the trend line, we've been, we've been pretty fortunate with that. I personally think that leak detection is going to, our product approach with leak detection is gonna keep that, uh, below that trend line. And especially if we look at our approach to mainline replacement, we're gonna be able to keep, uh, underneath that trend line, so...
We've got great hopes for that leak detection.
I do, absolutely. I think we can execute it. We've got a good team, and we can execute it well.
By the way, the asphalt patching on Country Club turned out nice, it's real flat.
Yeah, thank you. This guy's did an excellent job out there. We've had quite a few comments, actually, by people that are in the business that said, man, that is such a nice repair job.
I was with a customer just last week, I'd asked him about them, and he said, he's, he's very familiar with AC patchwork, and he said, that's the best he's ever seen from, especially from somebody who'd you have do this, lots are true, oh my goodness gracious. So, yeah, thank you.
Five years might tell the difference or something, but we'll see. It's a nice, it's terrific now.
I can't help but go after Jim bragging, is, the, on Skyway, that little bump is still there, you know? You guys patched it again, and it shrunk down about an inch or so, and so when I drive down Skyway, I go bump, 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 okay, I'll complain again and see if we can get another patch.
We, we know it's there.
I know it's there, cause I did it every day.
That's the town, isn't it?
But you have to keep in mind, it's temporary patch, it's not hot mixed asphalt, it's hydro patch. Hydro patch moves around, um, we address that, and we go out there and we level it out periodically. Uh, we can't get in there and do any work on that right now, we've, um, found out some issues that we have to address that are much larger than the deep itself.
But we are, we are fully aware of that. Thank you for bringing that up.
You're, you're very kindly welcome, yes.
If you think something's bumpy, come drive on Dean Road, and then everything else will be smooth in town, yeah.
Yeah, but that's a private road, isn't it?
No, it's not.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
I'm surprised you haven't said anything about Neil Road, cause that is not fun.
I am also probably have lost extension cords off your truck on Dean Road.
I had to have Ken Sitchin welding extend them.
Uh, just, just a little bit of background for your edification, there was a question about why the drop-off tune, just to, um, we, we had a big, that big contractor pipeline, that big one. We had them come in and do all of the main line, and then through this low period of time, we actually did the services off of that main line.
Oh, okay.
And that was a grant funded, so we had a fifty percent cost share on that. We used our crews to add to the fifty percent cost share by, by doing that service work. So it doesn't look like we put in the pipe, but we actually did all the service work while they ran the main line pipeline.
Yeah, that was the Skyway one.
Yeah. Billy, Skyway and Billy, and those were two, two different time periods, so we got an extension on it too. So we had two thousand nine and ten, and then two thousand twelve is another one.
Thank you.
That was the second round of that project, cause that was money that was left over, we got to use on that second, twice on the lower Skyway.
Yeah, we did the Skyway, then we did the services on Skyway too.
We did Skyway.
All right. Okay.
The, the board wants to move right along, so...
Bottom line is, the graphs don't always tell the full story.
That's right, that's why I wanted to...
They don't always tell the full story.
So Ann has a question on the treatment plant.
This is on page eighty, and it's, uh, the rehabilitation of tanks C, D, and E. And, uh, so we have the assessment from Harper, then it says, Kevin issued the notice to proceed for C tank rehab, and cathodic protection for systems for A tank and raw water tank, and then on page ninety-one, you see that...
Saw the assessment.
Yeah, he saw the assessment, and the cost for tank C is four hundred and seventeen thousand, and then there is no...
It's an estimated cost.
A cost for the cathodic protection for tank A, uh, and the raw water tank. And I just wondered, is that something that should've come before the board?
It will. So all we did was give Harper the notice to proceed to get bid documents ready for us to bid that out
Okay.
for the rehab of that tank, and for the cathodic protection on both of those tanks, to be included in the bid document.
So this wasn't like, go ahead and do this job. Yeah, that kinda scared me when I saw that.
I read notice to proceed the same way.
We gave Harper the notice to proceed under their current contract, cause their current contract actually said that they're, we're going to go out and bid all three tanks at once. And I said, no, we're not gonna bid all three tanks at once. So I gave them the notice to proceed only on the tank that they felt was the worst tank, which was C tank. And so they're going out for bid documents for the C tank, then that will go back to the board for you guys to give the approved one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Kevin, on page eighty also. Um, on the MPDS permit renewal assistance?
Yes.
You had a scheduled meeting for February sixth, did that happen?
Yes.
And could you elaborate on that?
Was it February sixth? I, it was, it was last week. I think it got delayed, but it was last week.
I think it's in his DM report.
I can cover it now, or cover it in my district manager's...
Oh, that's fine.
It's been due in one oh four.
I have the same question.
I wanna, I wanna, okay.
I'll give you a full update on it, and...
Perfect.
And it's...
That's fine.
Good, it's a good update.
Good, we got...
One thing about this school testing for, for lead, I, I, so it looks like Jim's cranking up for it. Is that gonna be any problem personnel-wise, to get out there and do that, no?
No, I asked the same question, and it doesn't seem like it's gonna be an issue. I believe that you are only required to test one spot, but I, I believe it's only one, and it's supposed to be the most used, uh, basically...
On, on each school site, though?
On each.
Yeah, so how many school sites do we have, I wonder?
I have the number sixteen.
Oh.
Yeah, we have, we have a couple more than that, because some that were on that list, they, they weren't in USD.
Fifteen and twenty.
Okay.
I know that. And, we're gonna do, um, not just only the public schools, but we've opted to do the private schools too.
Like the academy and...
Yes, yeah. I, I feel like it's, it's...
That, that makes sense.
It's good, it's good business for us to make sure that all the schools are tested.
Okay.
Yep.
So is that gonna be the, what is that person that goes out and, um...
It'll be TJ, so it'll...
TJ, TJ, yeah.
He'll, he'll do it. So he's gotta go pull samples, and send them on.
Scheduling the right time and making sure that...
Just kinda work it in, huh?
Site isn't used prior to...
Good, okay.
Cause it's first draw out of that, after...
We used to have the customers collect the samples.
So we're, I know we're doing this, but as, as a water district, is it required by law that we sample all of their points of use past our service to them, is that?
Yes, so now it's, it's a California state law that we are required to go out and sample for all public schools, uh, for lead by January...
Is it January or July?
July first.
July first, two thousand and eighteen.
What's...
No, just...
No, no, just one.
What's our, what's our liability if we go out and we've sampled fifteen or twenty points at a school, and we miss something, and some other agency or issue turns up, finding of lead, and we were the ones that gave it the all clear?
I'd ask our attorney. I think, I think if we abide...
I gotta pull it up, I didn't see it as a transfer of, of liability.
I think i- if we abide by the, the statute of the law, and it's shown that we did our due diligence and did everything by procedure.
Do, do we decide the points of sampling?
I believe we are required to ask them the most frequently used point of use.
One per site, right?
Yeah, one per site.
Oh, just one?
So it's just one at each school site.
Oh, okay, so we're not, so we're not sampling their devices within their circuit?
You're gonna say, what is the most frequently used, and they're gonna say that drinking pot right there, and we're gonna say, use that up until midnight, and don't use it between midnight, and I think it's an eight hour, don't quote me on that. There's a period of time that has to sit still, and the sample has to be taken at first draw.
Yeah.
It's the first draw out there, you take that sample, you deliver it to the lab, through a can of custody, they go up, take it from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
And it looked like this was just a one-shot deal, at least by this legislation that's on books right now. So, so unless they extend it, uh, it looks like it's just the one-time, uh, sampling.
Just gives them a, like, it's like an indicator test, do they have a problem with it?
You got a problem.
Cause it's not coming from our side, and it's never done on Monday.
Okay, can we move on to five B?
Yes.
Done? We'll take an action on both of them together. Five B. You guys have any questions? And then you wanna talk to us, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, if you have any questions on the billing...
No. It's pretty short.
To accept the billing report.
Our revenue is, uh, is exceeding budget projections.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay, if, uh, we need a motion to accept both of them?
Yeah.
I moved to accept the staff and billing reports.
I'd love to hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved to second, do we, uh, accept the staff and billing reports, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Six.
We're gonna go on to my report, okay. Uh, you have my written report, I'm kinda, uh, water rights, you got a pretty good idea where we're at now on that, so that was, that was great. Uh, North Lake Boat Lunch, we're still in the, um, well, there's two issues. We got the, we're still working with the state on getting, uh...
Verbiage going.
The, the legal things, um, and then, we're gonna sit down with the county, uh, before we go any further with any type of correction on that three acres, to figure, make sure that our correction that we're trying to get done is actually viable, that'll, that'll correct it. We have other issues with the county that we're trying to sit down with them also, so we're gonna take up a little bit of other time. The B reservoir design, um, we are at a sixty percent, uh, design phase, it's moving along fairly well. The one issue that we have is that we're getting, is the right-of-way issues on the Skyway. Um, I've contacted Emily, and I, we're, the county's not moving very fast, so I'm afraid this could really hold up the project. So Emily is working with, uh, their firm to start looking at title reports, to see, uh, if they can pull title on the, on each one of those parcels, see who the rightful owners of those are, if there is issues with getting ahold of those owners, or trying to get a easement through that, to figure out a condemnation maybe avenue to go about condemning those easements just for our purposes. Does that suffice?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Something, point of interest on that, my son is an engineer for the depot restaurant that burned. He's doing the plans and engineering for that, an application with the owner. And when he was drawing the plans, working with the owner, it's a disaster.
We know.
They have no idea where the property goes, and where it stops and starts, and who owns what. Cause my son went to draw it and said, how, what am I drawing?
So we have, that, that is an issue.
Yeah.
We have to have an easement through his property also, but he got, he owns, like, the Skyway.
Yeah, he owns the Skyway, and on down the other side, and all over the place.
And so, but, and it was quick standing.
But it's a ways down, I'm not sure how far. Yeah.
That's because you go through the deal, you, the old town, and that was the Skyway.
So there was never really a title surge on that area. And then there's a piece that when we come out of the treatment plant, and before we get to his place, is no man's land, like, nobody owns it.
I'll buy that.
It's this little space out there. So Neil did a lot of work on that, to look at that, he wants, he's probably gonna work with the county. They're gonna, uh, be looking into the actual title, pulling title on that, and seeing if, what, we can do that. So we're trying to really focus on this issue to make sure that it's not gonna be a holdup, when they get these...
And I don't think that's a, a local issue, I think it's that way throughout the entire town of Paradise. I found out after buying my property, that my entire driveway belonged to my neighbor across the street, and I had no legal access to my property.
It is a mess, we've encountered that building too.
And all of the properties were offset by that much all the way down the line, so...
Um, the other thing too, is that we're looking at, the staff is starting to look at tanks, uh, the, the bolted tanks versus the welded tanks versus the concrete tanks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a lot, the, the welded tanks are a newer feature, um, they're glass, kind of glass infusers.
I kinda thought that that was the final decision, is that's the direction we were gonna go, isn't it?
We're still looking at them to make sure that that is the final decision, we're gonna kind of RFP it to kinda look at both sides. But staff is, uh, also looking at maybe going and visiting a place that has steel bolted tanks, that maybe has a little bit age on them, to see, to make sure that they are holding up to what they're talking about. So we're, we're looking into that, that feature also.
Didn't we make a decision on that already?
That's what I just said, yeah.
You guys, you guys made a decision.
So do you have to bring that back to us, then, if you change your mind?
You guys made a decision to go...
Pursue that.
Steels?
Steel.
Or steel?
Steel.
But not if it's bolted or welded. Yeah, you did eliminate concrete.
Yeah.
Glass or paint, yeah.
So, so we're looking into that.
Okay.
Um, I think that's it on that one. Spillway?
No, I can't go to the spillway, you bypassed my processed water recycle. I've been waiting for that.
Yeah, the February thirteenth meeting.
It's okay, I won't be gonna let you.
My question, it's not really a question, on this B reservoir thing, we've got the loan for the design, and we're talking about going out and increase our loan approval to count cover costs, working, and also working on additional money for building this thing. Okay, where is the inspection I asked for months ago of the existing tank and the condition it's in? And I was told that that would happen, happen before we go into eleven million dollar project.
We got it, we got it, we got it when, um...
He came and gave a presentation.
I'm sorry, I had to answer.
Yeah.
We got that when Sammy presented it.
He's, doesn't have the background on, on the kind of construction that the B reservoir is.
I, I do remember that it was brought to the board, the board decided not to go forward with a outside inspector, that they took Sammy's advice as that. If you want to agendize it for another...
Yeah, I'd like to have it on next month's agenda.
So we'll agendize it, and then the board can make a final decision.
Because in, in the condition of the tank, and there's...
Need a final decision.
Some work that needs around the tank to...
I thought we already made a final decision on that, I thought we did too.
We, we made a final decision on that.
I thought so too.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
That night.
We did, you were here.
We could look at the notes.
Could I bother, could we bother you to look that up, and talk to Bill, and then if, if it wasn't resolved, well then, yes, we can stick it back on, happy to, Bill?
Processed water recycle project, sorry, NPDS permit. So we did, we had a kickoff, we, uh, we sat down with Larry Walker, and I am drawing a blank on the lady's name, but she is very, very sharp. She knows her NPDS permit and her, uh, her chemistry behind it, and about all the studies. They did a preliminary study on a mixing zone and dilution credit that we would need for our aluminum and for our DCBM. The, uh, the limits or the, the ratios that we would need are well below what has been given out in prior NPDS permits. Uh, there were, the DP, DCBM was a point, was a seven to one ratio, and the, um, the aluminum was a two to one ratio. And so it's very low, uh, they felt like our diver, our, our current diversion point was suffice. And that they felt like we have a real good shot at going to the water board. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna kinda tighten up their, their proposal, there were some questions, I, Neil was there, he had some really good, uh, observations. Not so much to punch holes in it, but just to answer the questions that she kind of assumed in there, but just to get them, just to get them answered. And then we're gonna sit down with the water board and start talking about renewal of the permit, and what, if they feel like these are acceptable. There was no intrusion in the, uh, in the, um, the tank, or where we're pulling water out of the, the reservoir. Our dilution did not go out anywhere close to that, and it was fairly close to the, to the edge of the reservoir, so...
Wow.
It was very, very positive.
So we're, we're going down the right path then.
She's crossing her finger.
Is that based on a computer model she ran?
It was, it, it, I forget the name of the computer model, but I guess it's a modeling program that is very used, it's used in all these different...
But they've gotten approvals for other...
But they've gotten approvals for other districts that were...
They, they've, the, all the other, uh, NPDs permits are public documents that they can look up to see who has gotten approvals for these different ones.
Okay.
So, um, so we're hoping, we're hoping that we're gonna be favorable. Um, she did say that the Central Valley is, uh, normally fairly favorable when it comes to dilution credits and to mixing zone studies, um, and she doesn't feel like we're even that, she, she's hoping that we're not even gonna have to do like a diet test, so.
Wow.
And, and we're saying now that we can meet those discharge parameters without doing anything.
So you'll still need, you'll still need dilution credits, but the dilution credits will help you meet the standards, and that the standards, even, uh, the current standards that they have in our permit probably will not be the standards even at the final permit that they'll be raised up, so, uh, I'm drawing blank on the numbers, but I believe it's eighty-six is our aluminum, that right now, two hundred is the standard, uh, based on...
But, but I mean, just so we're clear, we, I know that we need to make improvements up there in, in the ponds and, and such, the infrastructure and, and the cleanup, but what we're saying is regulatory-wise, we can get the monkey off our back without putting out any actual construction for improvements, so there, the improvements we do make are on our time schedule then, is that correct?
That's what we're, that's what we're going for. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to go and say, what is the least amount of work that we have to get done to meet the criteria?
Yeah.
And if the least amount of work that we gotta get done is, it, the dilution credits and the mixing zone study is it, then, then we're, we're golden. If they say, "No, you gotta, you gotta clean up here, you gotta do this, you gotta pipe this, you gotta do this," okay, now we know, and now we can, we can backtrack into those projects instead of trying to create a project to go for.
Would we be smarter just to give them what we have and wait for them to say we want more than to ask if this is enough?
Sounds like that's what's happening.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, because we don't wanna ask them if, you know, what else do we need to do?
Yeah, you never offer.
No, we're not gonna ask that.
That kinda sounds like...
You never offer anything.
We're going to say, this is...
Here's what we got.
We have, and this...
We think this'll do it.
And this meets your criterias that you've done in the past, therefore you shall give us this.
Perfect.
But we, we might still need a project so we can consistently meet those...
Well, no, I, I'm with you, Mark, but what I'm saying is, whereas a year ago, the monkey was on our back and we were in violation and there was a lot of gray area, we can get to the point where they say we're happy, now we can schedule it and budget it...
Exactly.
As we see fit.
I, I have some comments about that, and we just talked the board into spending a couple hundred dollars on checking the water after the ponds and when it hit the reservoir. And it goes down the hill and you could call it a riparian area on both side, both ponds, and the aluminum went up. See, the soils are heavy and...
High aluminum, yeah.
So, and it went way above the standards. The, the DCBM went down below the requirements because the water running over the rocks was oxygenizing it away. So the problem is, from the, the ponds, you have to put it in a pipe, as simple as that, and you'd want the pipe to have some sort of mixing action in it, to get, to get the DCBM to go off. And the pipe might even be an open ditch or concrete ditch where you don't get to the soil, I don't know which one it would be, but you need to do some studying on that, but that's one way you can control both the DCBM and the other. And getting it into the lake where it's diluted was the thing I asked about when I first, we first started going into this, and I was told we, at that time, we could not move the point where we sampled.
Right.
Everybody on staff was adamant that it couldn't be moved. Now, the people involved, the regulators have said, "We can move that point." So here's a huge planning, but keep in mind, we need to test the soils, the amount of aluminum in it, and we need to test how far we have to go to reduce the DCBM and whatever conduit we use from the ponds going down. It can't be open like it is now in the riparian area, and then you, all of a sudden you go, "Well, uh, it's riparian area, maybe we have to put the pipe away from that," because of people's concern about...
You might be right, Bill, we, there may be a simple solution to actually improve the, the results, so we'll look at that after, like Kevin says, we'll have, we'll have the time if we get this permit.
Yeah, but we don't, that's best practices, and we don't wanna tell them we know a better way to do it till after we secure the level, because otherwise we're gonna lower our level.
Yeah.
We don't wanna tell them we got a better way of doing anything until we say, "This is the best we can do right now," and they say, "Good enough."
Well, I think one thing you've...
Then we can do better afterwards.
Okay, but one thing that's going on in Washington DC is EPA and the, are fighting, but the EPA has already said, under the new leadership, that they're gonna lower water quality standards because they're too high.
And too severe.
And, and gonna lower the cost. So it may come out of Washington, and if it does, it's gonna affect California standards too. We can have stricter standards in California.
And we will.
And have less, but these are, these are political things.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, we need to do some homework, maybe we don't even tell them what we're doing, I don't, you know, as far as finding out what aluminum's there, can water go this way or that way, and it's, it could be experimented on really simply, and you don't, you just do the work and write up the records where you know what you can do when it gets to the point. I'm not saying to go into, up to reading and tell them, "This is what we wanna do." I'm saying do some work now in front of them.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, spillway.
Spillway, yeah, so, uh, Gentero is scheduled to have their Phase One report back to us this month, um, they asked for an extension in time, which we granted them, we didn't see any, any problem with that, so, uh, we expect something in, in, uh, March. So we granted, granted them an extension till March nineteenth, so that's where that is at this point. Uh, PG Need Sabla, we have a, uh, site visit of the miasin asset scheduled for March first. We're gonna start in...
Before you jump on that, uh, just very quickly on the Magalia Dam, uh, I read in an article online yesterday, they listed Magalia Dam as one of the extremely hazardous dams. Were you aware of that?
It's not, it's not actually Magalia, it's Paradise.
Yeah, Paradise.
It's extremely hazardous. Magalia's only just hazardous.
No, no, they said the Magalia Dam.
He's right, it is the Magalia Dam.
They said both.
That they're talking about.
But I can tell you that the Sa, Division of Safety of Dams, based on their, their study, uh, has Paradise as extremely hazardous and Magalia as just hazardous, and that's based on our requirement for an inundation study that is going, uh, Paradise's inundation study is actually due January first, two thousand and eighteen.
That is just, that is just the spillways. You've got two subjects, you're mixing them up.
The dam versus spillway.
The spillways are rated that way. Magalia Dam is raised, has been with...
Extremely hazardous.
Extremely hazardous ever since, and that's why it has, can only hold eight hundred acre feet, has nothing to do with the spillway, it has, when we opened up the...
Sure, the dam itself.
The dam a little bit, we found the center of it wet when we changed the work up there, in fact, we had to put it back after George had him open it up, and the Bureau of Dam Safety would not allow us to do that work, and said, "Put it back, put it back the way it was, no, you can't raise the water except the way you have now. If it's a rain event, a flood event, you can raise the water, but as soon as that event's over, it goes back down to where it is."
Yeah, right.
Well, I bring this up because we need to keep our eye on the ball on that one, because it may be good for us or may be funding available, it may be bad for us, because they may say, "You can't use Magalia anymore," because they claimed that extremely hazardous meant definite loss of life if it failed, that's the way they laid it out, now...
The road.
Yeah, now, it's, and, and I, just to give clarification, it's, it's based on the, there, there, we are required to do a new inundation study on both our dams, okay? And it's true, it, they, they rate the dams based on life failures if, or life, uh, deaths if, uh, if the dam fails.
Yeah.
And to be honest, they rated Paradise as highly, extremely hazardous, based on the amount of water behind it. Magalia is, it's a terrible dam, I agree, but based on if Magalia failed, there's not gonna be a huge loss of life.
There's nothing downhill to hurt.
So there, it's actually rated as hazardous.
Two outsheds, clear down, and that's it.
You can go with the ranch down, they'll argue with you.
We are required to have an inundation study done for Paradise Lake as of January first, two thousand and eighteen is actually, it's behind, but it's because these regulations came out so late that we gave them our current inundation study map, and they said just basically, "Hold off and we'll take a look at it." There's been, uh, Neil and Jim were part of a, I don't know, were you part of that? No, I don't remember, uh, a webinar that talked about the new inundation studies and the maps needed. Um, we are gonna go out for an RFP to, uh, multiple consulting services to have a new inundation study done on both Paradise and Magalia, so that'll be coming to the board here shortly, but that's how they rate, that's how they rate them.
What study are they doing, Kevin?
Huh?
What study are they doing?
Inundation map study, basically when the dam fails...
Oh, stable.
Spillway people?
No, no, different.
Different?
Dam versus spillway, yeah.
It's a different engineering firm or something?
We're going to go out for an RFP to multiple engineering firms for them to give us a proposal on a new inundation study on both dams.
And who's the firms?
We don't know.
Don't know yet, that's where we're gonna go out.
We sent it to multiple firms.
Did he like the map you saw of, uh, Bu County and Marysville when, last year when Orville Dam was threatened, you know, there was a threat, and they showed that big area that would be inundated, that's the same kinda map that we would have to provide?
It's part of, it's now part of the law.
And I know Gally got some legislation that if it gets passed, it's gonna speed all that.
The other thing that was in the news was that extremely hazardous dams needed a safety, or a inspection every year, that was in the news.
Mm-hmm.
We already do that.
Yeah.
So we already comply with the requirements.
I haven't been talking to James about that.
The one thing is you have to exercise your, uh, opening and closing of the valves and stuff, we already do that, too. So, so it's just, it was, it's something that's new in the law, but we already, we already comply to that law.
On the RSP for that study?
RSP, yeah.
Can we make sure we contact local firms too? In the past, we've gone to large national firms pretty much, and we haven't...
The problem is, is that a lot of local firms don't specialize in these type of...
I don't, I give them a chance to do some work, in other words, get, make sure they're on of the list, so maybe some of them will be able to do that for you.
That will be on an agenda, I'm sure, that we'll deal with, yeah? Right.
Uh, okay.
PJ Need Sabla.
Yeah.
We have, we have a, a site visit scheduled for March first.
Right.
Who was it?
Are you going?
You and Bill, isn't it?
I requested a...
I don't know, I'll try and go, I'm not...
Okay.
If you can't, but then we'll get an alternative, we'd rather have you go.
I've got a guy down here that's just going, dying to go, so...
Can we do that?
If someone else wants to go, it's okay with you.
Dan, can, can we, Bill doesn't really have the time to go and doesn't really...
No, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a difference in my business as opposed to other people. Mine's very seasonable, I don't, it's based on weather, and so I would like to go, but...
Oh, okay, because last, last time we met, you said you didn't really...
I said I didn't know what I was gonna do.
Yeah. Anyway, so at the last moment, if you're not able to make it, well then...
Yeah, then we know who will go, Dave will go.
So you're the alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, moving right along.
District Manager of Recruitment, um, I'm out of the loop on this one, but other than I know that they have done, uh, over the phone, uh, screening...
Can you start with the... Yeah. I'm on my screening, um, um...
Okay.
Uh, Retirement Plan Selection, we actually, ICMA was onsite all this last week, uh, last week, they were here Thursday and Friday, they met with, uh, everybody but one employee to set them up with their new accounts, uh, they were very thrilled, they gave a hour-long presentation at the beginning of the, uh, Thursday morning to walk through their processes, their new plan features, um, they had three people onsite here for us, and we have an estimated transition date of March sixth, and I'll see why that would not happen on March sixth, everything seems to be in line.
Did that go okay, the, the ICMA meetings with the...
I think it went very well, um, I think everybody that came out of there was, was very happy.
You're happy, good.
So they've already given us account access, I, some of us have walked on and signed up right ago, we don't have anything there yet, but we're on, we're, everything that they said they were gonna deliver thus far is here.
Great.
Good news.
Um, Retirement Plan Auditor, uh, that's, that's done, that's part of our agenda tonight.
Was anybody surprised that, uh, the, uh, this was the audit for the FTJ guys? Was anybody surprised that there was really no major issue?
That's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's new business, ahead of us again.
Coming to that.
We like to get...
Okay, number six is information only, moving on, number seven, Kevin?
Treasurer's Report.
Yeah, yeah, my Treasurer's Report, uh, our cash flow is continuing to increase...
That's what we like to see.
Uh, revenue seems to be, is, is outpacing, uh, our, our consumption revenue is outpacing our budgeted, um, our budgeted expenses are right on line, uh, major, uh, expenses are the B res, design, we're starting to see some payments for that coming in, uh, NPDs is slowly coming in for payments on that, and, uh, the Phase One portion of the, um, spillway investigation, again, is a big money, big money issue.
Yeah.
On page...
Go ahead, sorry.
Go first.
Oh, I just had a comment on, uh, you think we might need to, uh, reduce our estimates on our consumption revenue, just because it looks like we're going into a, another situation.
Another drought here.
Um, I, I just ran through some numbers and compared it to, I don't, uh, two thousand, I can't remember what year I compared to, but drought year, and it looks like maybe fifty thousand dollars, we'd have to lower our...
Well, uh, let's talk about that when we budget for next year. I don't think we're gonna need that for this year, I don't, I think, I think overall we're, we have one big month in June that might be a factor.
Okay.
But for February, March, April, I don't see any real effect on that.
Yeah, I was thinking April through June, yeah.
I think April through June, I think we're gonna see steady, steady ones on that, I mean, look at December, we had one thirty-seven in December.
Right.
I don't see it falling off very much off of that even through May, 'cause May, people are still gonna start turning on sprinklers a little bit, you know?
I'm just wondering though, maybe that, you know, in the last drought, when did the state actually impose the limit, uh, the limitations, whether in April or May? I can't remember.
I believe it was May.
It was May.
I think they, they, they take like a final reading in April and then they...
Okay.
That's when they start.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, the water year is May 1st to October 31st. So, my question's on page 112. So, do we want to maybe increase the B reservoir project cost now that we know that it's closer to 11 than 5?
Yeah.
And I guess you're going to leave the process water recycle, just as, as being conservative, leaving that in there for 11-5?
Yeah, right now.
Okay.
Next budget year, I hope, hopefully by next budget year, we'll have a good.
Better handle it, yeah.
About this NPDS program.
That's my only question.
And we, we know that cost for Tank C, so should we plug that in there, too?
Yeah. We budgeted it, but we, we know that it's going to go down to about a half. It'll go down by half.
Right.
Because when we budgeted originally, we were, he was thinking we were going to do all three. It was just three, CD.
No, we had already done it. So that, that million was for all three?
He thought it was for all three, but obviously, it would not have covered all.
No.
No, just two, about two, maybe.
Not adequate.
Yeah, but I said do one at a time.
Yeah.
And it looks like from the condition assessment, that one of the, whatever the last one was, they even, they even said that they might be able to push it out even further.
Two more years.
That's right, a couple of years.
Life left in it, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was my recommendation, too, five years, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions? Treasurer's report?
I'm afraid I didn't get time to really look at it.
I didn't have any on it.
I move, then, we accept the treasurer's report?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I just had a question on Pinpoint Products. Does that, does that?
That's in the checks.
No, that's, that's next.
That's my question, too.
That's the next item. Hang on, I got a couple of those, too.
You can have ourselves.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Section system.
Thank you. Okay, section eight.
Prove the checks.
I'm not sure that's a good word on this one.
You can, you can ask that question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on page 114, there's a vendor called Pinpoint Products for $21,000, and I didn't see it in the vendor list, so I didn't know what it was. What is it?
It's, it's late detection. It's a late detection.
Oh, okay.
The unit.
I forgot that, I forgot that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my other question was on page 119, Cedar Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say.
So, that's water education, water education, what, what is that? Because I sit on the Water Conservation Committee, and I didn't see anything with that.
I thought that we had.
I don't know anything about that.
What are we on? Can you explain that?
On page 119, Cedar Creek.
Cedar Creek's billing.
I thought that we had reduced that significantly, and all of a sudden, it is big.
They didn't bill us for months and months and months, so it's for bills back a couple months back, so.
And what exactly are they doing for water education conservation?
That's how she lists it, so she doesn't detail out the bill completely, but a lot of it was like for the party at the park.
That's still.
It wasn't water conservation, it was public relations.
Public relations, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Go down the line, or you, everybody's flipping through to find their page, yeah?
Yeah.
Going down the line, I got some.
Yeah, go for it, yeah, go for it.
Page 122, North Valley Tree Service. Quite an expenditure for tree removal or repair or something, or what, what's that for?
Which one were you?
Uh, North Valley Tree?
Yeah.
How many trees was that, Jim?
Tell me the cost on that one.
Uh, $6,800.
$6,800, that was the three trees.
We had, we had three trees, one here, one at the treatment plant, and one at Paradise Lake.
Those were our trees?
Our town.
On our property? Okay.
And we had another tree just taken out recently that was at the B-res that was hanging over somebody's property that was, that was.
That was a $500 bill, North Valley Tree. That was an emergency removal. Citizen had purchased property that borders our B-res property on the southwest corner and identified an absolute dead.
I remember he came in here. The guy came in the meeting, remember?
That's right.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We removed it.
It's really on, you weren't here.
Get that out.
Yeah.
Had to be done.
Do we get verbal quotes for that, is that how it goes?
Uh, one, on the emergency stuff, we normally, we went with North Valley because we've had success that they are the only one that has the, has the.
Yeah, they're, they're registered with the state.
Yeah.
For public work projects, but some changes have been made to that, so we've, we've got, that's kind of dealt with in regard to those types of things. We did request bids on that, so.
Oh, I doubt we did.
They were, they were actually located.
Okay.
And because they were hazard trees, they were also the ones that could get there the quickest.
Okay.
And they were also the ones that we used on B-res as an emergency, because they could get there now, otherwise.
Good.
Tree companies are two months out.
Thank you. Intu Technologies, I see another purchase for polymers.
On page?
On page 122 as well. Next item, yeah, next, next vendor down. And I thought we had determined that we were going to go out for bid on those things, and, and I think you guys were also working on jar testing up at the water treatment plant.
Still are.
I'm, I'm just curious what shakes out with all that.
I don't think they've gotten.
He just submitted a sample to another vendor for jar testing, just, it was in his report on.
Because, because I mean, it just seems like business as usual, or still just buying from the one.
No, I think they're moving forward, but I don't think that they've gotten any results from the jar testing to make any changes at this point.
Okay, well, I don't make a big deal out of it, but they should be at least getting some bids and bringing it up.
Keep bringing it up, yeah.
To us to look at.
He's working on it, I think.
I think they were waiting for the jar testing before they.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. As long as we're moving forward on it. Uh, page 124, Town of Paradise, I'm assuming that's the fire hydrant fund that is paying for that, right?
That's Fire, Fire Hydrant Fund, yep.
Okay, and then the last item, 125, sodium bisulfate univar. Do we, are we buying minimum amounts so that we don't have to get a bid on that, or, or is that?
I think we're bidding that also. I believe that we're bidding that.
Because, because I don't recall seeing a bid on that.
Well, it wouldn't be coming to the board just based on the dollar.
Okay.
It would be, it would be an internal bid process.
Okay, but we are, we are going out and bidding that?
I'll confirm with Jim on that, but I believe we are.
Okay.
Well, while you're on 125, what's USA Blue Book?
I'll let Jim answer that one, for Keith, whoever wants.
I'm sorry?
USA Blue Book.
They're parts, water treatment stuff.
Oh, is it?
Meters and.
Well, I know what Blue Book is, and I thought, what?
No, the Blue Book's a company, it's like a mail order for meters and.
From USA Blue Book, you brought recently some flushing supplies for.
Terrific. I, I knew that you weren't spending $500 to see what truck should cost.
No, no.
Kelly.
That's Kelly with USA.
That's Kelly Blue Book, but I just thought maybe they changed their name to Blue Book.
It's kind of like the Grangers for water.
Yeah, it's like Grangers.
Got it, okay, got it.
Yes.
You use USA Blue Book and hollered water for a lot of it.
Okay, I guess we're all done with questions on that. Phil said he didn't have any.
Okay. Did it go?
Good.
Any more? No?
Move it?
Well, then let's, I would love to hear somebody take connection.
I move to make approval, a motion to approve the checks.
You gotta read them.
No, 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 seven is, oh, yeah, yeah, no, you're right, thank you.
Approval of general fund check numbers.
I forgot to read that.
51470 through 51576 for the month of January 2018 totaling $576,003.20 cents. Exclusive avoided checks number 51557, and authorization of a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extra ordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of February.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Legal report.
I just have two items, but first, it's just kind of to update you on Water Fix, and you may already be up to date, because you can't open a paper or click on a link without.
My wife keeps telling me I'm hard of hearing, and I say, no, I'm not hard of hearing.
First thing I do when I sit down is move this thing, but yes. So there were a few motions submitted to the hearing officers seeking to stay the hearing when DWR announced that, hey, maybe we'll do one tunnel instead of two, or one and then two. So, pleadings were filed, papers were flying, the order came in today. Hearing officer said, nah, we're going to go ahead. So I believe it's tomorrow that the hearings resume. Hearing officer said that they didn't think it was an efficient use of resources to stall the process out, and that DWR just said, maybe they'll do a phase project. They haven't committed to a phase project yet, so a delay would be premature. I don't think anybody's surprised by that. I doubt it'll be the end of it. Somebody's going to sue somebody over it, but at this point, hearings look like they're back on track. The other item I wanted to give you a brief update on was the Public Records Act lawsuit, if you recall.
The what?
The Public Records Act lawsuit. You recall a few months ago, we asked the State Water Board to provide records, and they now state that they have provided all of the disclosable records. There was an email from a board member to the Natural Resources Defense Council meeting that was interesting, and we can talk about that in greater detail during a closed session in the future. At, at this point, we're looking at filing a motion to have the judge review the documents that were withheld, because there's a ton of them, to make sure that the privileges that they're claiming do, in fact, apply. And then depending on how that motion goes, it's time to kind of circle back with you guys and, and see how you'd like to proceed. So that's where that's at. And I think Kevin hit the rest of the things we're working on, so.
Appropriate time to ask you a couple of questions because you're legal counsel, or hold until our final comments?
No, I guess you could ask now, sure.
Well, one was in, in regards to the twin tunnels. Do you, I, I mentioned earlier, kind of a conspiracy theory, but do you see any connection between the timing and the, and the denial of any of the water storage projects meeting the criteria for the funding that they, the money that they have, and possibly them coming up with a way to fund the twin tunnels, being how the major water districts are backing away?
Yeah, I haven't looked at it. I mean, I know what you're referring to, but I haven't looked into it to have an opinion on it. I can talk to Dustin and see if, if he has given it some thought, but, yeah.
Okay, and then on this new requirement for mandatory conservation in perpetuity that the Department of Water Resources is trying to pass.
Right.
I'm sure you're familiar with it. They, I don't know how they're able to put, put it to a vote amongst themselves. It's kind of like, you know, the fox controlling the chicken coop. However, they were put off by a bunch of water districts that showed up and protested, and so now they're going to have a public hearing on it.
Mm-hmm.
I would suggest that we have our legal counsel or somebody there to represent us, because that is so ridiculous when you look at it. A neighbor of yours could walk by who doesn't like you because, maybe you hollered in because his dog went on your lawn, and if he sees your sprinkler putting any droplets on the road, he has an anonymous webpage, he can turn you in, and they are required to notify you that you're in violation, and the second time, they're required to fine you $500 for violating that. Now, I don't know about you, but I have never seen a sprinkler system yet. Fred can attest to this. You show me a guy who has an irrigation system that doesn't put some of the water on hard concrete or asphalt, and I'll show you a guy who lives in a condominium in downtown Sacramento. And that's about the only place. So if we don't protest that, it's ridiculous. If they get away with making that a permanent law in perpetuity for conservation, that's totally unenforceable, but you talk about grief. Can you imagine a neighbor that you don't like turning you in every week? What are you going to do?
I'll check Aqua's stance on it, too.
Yeah, we can check with Aqua. We see what the legislative committee is doing on it, and then I'll talk to Dustin and see what our other clients.
Somebody needs to protest.
See if we can do a coordinated effort, sure.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll get, I'll get back to you.
Okay, and the last question I have is, do you have any reason why I can't work on the other side of the meters?
Other than the ones that we've discussed?
Well, you, I asked you last time to come back and tell me why we couldn't do it. Can you tell me why we can't do it?
No, I can't tell you why you can't do it. I can just tell you the risks associated with doing it, right? And, and those are the liability once you cross that line, right? Which we can try to deal with, with waivers and releases and those types of issues. The other is a potential Prop 218 challenge. I'm just telling you it's a potential, I'm not telling you it'd be successful.
Okay.
And then the third would be whether, you know, the cost benefit analysis, if you have to ramp up the crew, and any bargaining that's associated with changing the scope of work for your employees.
Thank you.
Know what we're talking about?
But I, I think the next step, if this is something that the board is serious about, is kind of fine tuning that plan, and then letting us look at that, because right now it seems kind of like a, a concept from 30,000 feet, and if we can get it a little more.
Right, you're, you're at 30,000 feet.
I know, you're down.
I've been on the ground, but I'm not going to spend any, I wasn't going to spend any more time on it unless you told me it was possible.
Yeah, I, I can't tell you it's impossible. The, the piece that will be interesting, though, because I think your, your challenge, i-if it comes from anywhere, is going to be from local vendors, right?
And that's their problem, not ours.
Local plumbers.
Yeah, exactly.
Since I post cards every year to say they offer this service beyond the meter on private property, I think most of us.
Something you have to agendize that we can talk about.
I think, I think so.
If that's not a local business, that's somebody that's soliciting for our general.
Well, who can do it better than us?
I'm not arguing, I'm just informing, that's all. That's it.
Since we're talking to you, Emily, I got one question for you on page.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
On page 88, down here on inundation studies, if you go down, emergency action plan.
You sure you want to ask me about an inundation study?
Well, I'm just, just one question. It says requires inundation maps to be publicly available. EAPs will be protected from public disclosure. What's the difference there? I'm, I was confused reading that.
Public.
Yeah, the emergency action plan, you would redact, right? So it's a public document, but you, there are exceptions for the Public Records Act, and there may even be a specific exception for this, that would allow you to not make public your specific emergency action plan because of safety concerns, right? If there was going to be some act of terrorism.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
You don't want, you don't want potential terrorists to know how you would combat whatever they would do.
Oh, so you could provide the map, but you wouldn't provide the plan?
But you wouldn't provide the plan.
Okay, I'm with you.
Because the plan, it's, you've got to have both, so both are submitted, emergency action plan and the inundation study.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Scared?
The inundation study.
There's another hot topic in the legislature, too, it's, and you'll probably hear about it, it's a water tax.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Trying to fund their programs through a water tax. Aqua is.
For disadvantaged communities.
Opposed to it, and they're asking for letters of support, which we have offered to give letter of support to, to oppose it, so. And I believe it's two, there's two different water taxes that are going through the legislature right now for different, different funding of different projects.
Distributing the well.
Keep getting liberals in there. Okay, that was information only. Number 10, unfinished business, continued from the January 17 meeting.
Kevin?
So, we took our shot at changing the language of the policy to allow public members to be on all committees, and that it opens it up that any director can leave, promoted by a director, and nominated, and that there's no expiration of their terms.
I think the verbiage looks pretty much like we all agreed on.
Looks good to me, too.
Looked good.
You did good.
You know what? I'm not opening up to the public if anybody, if any of you people want to come forward, because there's not too many out there that are responding, I just float right over that. But if you want to step up, please do, and I'll recognize yourself. Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the amendments to Chapter 2.27 of the PID Policy and Procedures Manual as presented.
Seconded.
It's been seconded twice, that's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 11, new business. A, purchase of vehicle. Kevin and Keith.
This was budgeted this year for replacement of a truck, and I'll let Keith tell you what truck it is and what's happening.
I think it's pretty much all here. It's all here in front of us, we got it covered, and it's late, so we just start tripping right along here.
That's okay with you.
What's wrong with a 1992 truck? Now, come on.
There you go, you might get it.
I have my chance.
I make a motion to approve and authorize interim...
Just one comment.
She has a question.
I just wanted to commend you that we did budget $35,000 for this vehicle, and you saved us $5,000. Thank you very much.
Or $4,200.
Thank you.
Now you can go.
I move approval to authorize interim district manager to direct appropriate staff to purchase the 2018 Ford F-150 X1E XL four-wheel drive super cab from Elk Grove Ford State Contract in the amount of $30,878.19.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. B, pipeline project materials purchased.
So we're doing, we're, we've scheduled the pipeline for the Crestwood, Crestview pipeline this year. We wanted to do a bulk purchase for it, so this is the amount for the bulk purchase for that pipeline project.
I think it's all pretty clear.
Looks good.
I was just gonna make a comment, you know, I mean, it's more work, but you could cherry pick and pull out, you know, the lowest bid, and you go into that, you go into telling the vendors that you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, you still provide the list, but, you know, we're gonna take the lowest price of each item and then go with that. That's what, we used to do that where I used to work. I mean, it takes, it's a longer process, but you get, you say...
Well, you could probably do it through...
Well, you can't do it to avoid competitive bidding. I don't think that's not, that's not what you're talking about.
But that could change prices.
No, you, well, you could, you could. You just, you just say that we're gonna take the lowest price, and then we'll put a package together, in other words, you, you look at the lowest price for each item.
So, we kind of do that with our inventory stuff. When we look at big jobs like this, we don't do it as much because we want to get all of that planned job package.
One package.
Our inventory, we look at that a little different. We want to buy ball valves versus cork stops, or ball valves versus galvanized fittings or something like that. Then we do that a little differently.
Okay. That makes sense, okay. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Could I ask more?
Sure.
How much money did you save by doing that?
Well, you, I mean, you could, you could run the numbers right here, you could see how much we'd save. I didn't run the numbers, but you could save thousands of dollars.
Everything's there.
Yeah, you could save thousands of dollars by doing that, because I compared some single items that this particular vendor got the bid on, and it was two, $3,000 difference between somebody else. So you can save thousands of dollars by doing that, but...
There's not, there's not a ton of variance on this one.
Right. When you look at across the line...
But when you look at the bottom line, yeah, I understand, yeah. So anyway, just an idea. Thank you. I appreciate the information on the, on the parts in the inventory, that's great. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, action, please.
I move approval to authorize the interim district manager to direct appropriate staff to cause the purchase of materials as bid for job number 18-01 from Pace Supply in the amount of $48,963.45.
I'll second that.
Any further questions? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Because we should cherry pick it in the future and just see what the difference is. I don't think we should give a blank check. I like what Mark brought up.
Okay, one opposition vote. Thank you, Bill. Drone policy, C.
So, this is something that is actually recommended by Aqua JPIA. We kind of took their, their drone policy, we ran it through legal for a few suggested changes that we made in there, but it's more directed at district drone use for our own safety. And then on the backside, we have kind of offered the FFA regulations for anybody else using drone on our property that they abide by, which allows us kind of to, if someone is abusing the drone, that we have the ability to squash that. And Mickey's here to kind of, she's the author of it. It's been run through the Lake Committee, and they've been able to look at it, and then now it's here.
I would imagine it was kind of a boilerplate off of several others that you gleaned, and then, yeah.
I do have a question about it, though.
I got one.
For years, I was a radio control hobbyist, and there still are some of our ilk around that don't fly drones with cameras. They simply fly helicopters, or gliders, or powered planes for entertainment. But under the description of a UAS, I would fall under that, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't spell that out a little better.
Well, actually, this policy is really just for the district use.
The what?
District use.
So it's for, for, like, if I was flying the district's drone, I would have to abide by this policy? That's what it's mostly there for?
This is for district use.
Okay.
So recreation, I would, I personally won't be flying for recreation on district type.
I didn't see that in there that it specifies...
It's the last, it's the last sentence of the first paragraph. The policy applies to the use of UAS by PID departments and PID contractors.
Contractors. So basically, if we were to...
Okay.
Yeah, if we...
You're golden.
Okay.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Mickey, will you be the program coordinator?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it did say Information Systems Manager on the first draft, but we wanted to give a little bit of freedom, you know, so.
The, the UAS operator must perform a pre-flight inquiry to determine any other flight restrictions in the area. So before you would go up there with a drone to do pictures, you would have to call a tower somewhere, or the FAA, and ask for flight clearance, or ask if there were any flights going over Paradise Lake?
Or is that only under such a footage?
There's an app for that. So there's an actual app that's on the device before you fly, so you just bring up the app, it'll let you know if there's any kind of restrictions, any close, you know, once in a while, an area that's normally open would be closed, and so those will show up.
So that qualifies as a pre-flight inquiry?
Yeah.
By looking at the app?
Yeah, because that, and it's actually a requirement by the FAA that you do that.
Okay.
But we just put it into our policy just to kind of...
Kind of a question I had is, oops, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
In regards to the five miles from the airport.
Mm-hmm.
We're technically closer than that. As the crow flies?
Down here we are, and we've already talked to the airport about it, so, and we, we have, we know exactly what we need to do anytime we need to fly.
Yeah, because that app would cover that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I shouldn't say as the crow flies.
Those are information only, right?
No, there's an acceptance.
You just have to have permission with the program.
We're gonna vote on it. Do we approve this policy?
Move. 135.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
But there's nobody at our airport.
Yes, absolutely.
I move to approve, to adopt the Paradise irrigation district drone use policy.
I'll second. Go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey.
State revolving fund agreement, amendment number one. Kevin?
Yep, this is just to amend the state revolving fund agreement based on the increase in the design costs that was approved by the board for the A-zone pipeline and all the realignments from 500 to 800,000. 800 is over the contract price, but we're just gonna give us a round number at the top of that. And so the state revolving fund has approved that, and this is just the amendment to that original agreement.
What's that going to cost the district? Any interest and time?
The interest on that is, I believe, below 2%. The, the funds are not required to be repaid until after completion, 18 months after completion. If we start the construction process within that 18 months, the design just rolls into the construction cost, and so whatever the construction cost would be would be rolled into the design cost.
Well, how much would we be paying a month or a year for this loan? And when we, and when it's over with, how much money are we gonna pay out?
I have to get my calculator on.
How much is the money?
It's, it's 11 mil that we're estimating for the construction plus 800,000, so 811 million, 800,000.
Seven hundred thousand dollars. How are we gonna pay for that?
It's built into our rates.
It's built into our rates? Other words, you're gonna use the rate that the protest was over, and it backed off, and now we're gonna use that money to get out on another million...
It was already earmarked for that.
Seven hundred thousand dollar project?
2% is 220,000 annual.
It was, it was already earmarked for that.
Yeah, it's already built into it. Unfortunately, we had to do that.
Instead of raising the rates for the recycle, we raised the rates for the B-res.
And I'm opposed to that. I don't, I think unless we look at that plant and get our district in better financial shape, this is a bad deal. We don't have enough reserves if something happens to a major pipeline and stuff right now, and it doesn't look like we are in the future.
Well, we're, between now and when it actually starts, and we have to start paying anything back, we're gonna have a significant amount of time to be able to build more reserves, not nearly enough.
When we've gone through this and debated it, I've been told several, over and over again, we would look at the engineering study and get that done. Then we wouldn't do anything else until we had the engineering study and the estimated cost. We wouldn't go out and borrow money and commit ourselves to building the project. Now, you're, by doing this without knowing what the costs are from the engineering study, you're already committing to building it.
With all due respect, we approved it. We approved it already.
The, this is, maybe I'm hard of hearing, but to me, I, it's just, to me, it's a bad, bad business. I think you're doing things that commits money we don't have to borrow money in a large amount that we don't have the ability to pay for and have any kind of decent reserves.
Well, the majority of the board felt it was a water quality issue that needed to be addressed.
Well, I don't agree with that either on it.
I believe it passed four to one. Four to one.
Okay. The one thing I have on the board is I can speak.
Yeah.
And so I want to speak to it, and this is the time I can speak to it, because you're talking about approving money directly into it. This isn't a debatable issue now. You're telling me that we already approved this much money and we would borrow? Okay. I just want to say it's a bad business deal. We're doing things we don't have money for. It's the same thing that got this district in trouble before. It's the same thing that led to the recall movement and other things. And to me, this is bad business. We don't, if that plant up there, the B reservoir now is in good enough shape to last for two or three years, and that's what I ask for is inspection of that thing by somebody who was an expert, an engineer in it, and at one time I was told that if we pass the engineering study, we would get that study. And we haven't gotten that study to know what that thing is actually in condition for. I just, so I, it's a time for me to speak up and say something about it.
There were other issues, Bill. It's a reliability issue for the district as well. We're getting increased reliability through this project, we're getting fire flow...
Okay, I'm in favor of the pump replacement and increased fire flows above. I'm not in favor, that's not a big issue here, but I'm not in favor of the million seven hundred thousand, and I'm willing to say, before you get done, it's gonna be another 20 or 30% on it. Now, South Feather recently did some major engineering and stuff, and they thought the project was gonna be around 20 million. It turned out that it's gonna be much above that, that the person on staff that was in charge of it, was supposed to be the new manager, then didn't get promoted, and it looks, I don't know what his job is saved for what on it, but it's turned out to be a big fiasco. And I'm saying to me, this thing is a fiasco. This is doing something that really isn't necessary. Of a pumping station, I think it's necessary.
We're getting redundancy for our 42-inch main that comes from the treatment plant as well, Bill, and that's huge, because if something happens to that 42-inch main...
The town is down.
Yeah, we're, we're done.
Yeah, but nobody's bothered to go back to see where the 42-inch main is now if you could go next to it on the right-of-way we have.
That's the reason why they're going down Skyway, is to get it away from the other right-of-way. So you have two different separate lines that aren't impacting, if something happened on that hillside on the 42-inch...
Are we gonna run two lines once the new one's in? I would assume we're gonna abandon the old one.
No. No, it's a redundant, it's a redundant...
It's only a line to make sure we have something that, for an accident in the future.
It's a standby.
A line that's never failed.
It's never failed, but it's also 80 years old now.
Okay, and there's one closer to the plant that comes across the creek that needs to be replaced, along with the standards underneath it, and it's not even included in this.
I'm just trying to point out, there are other issues here that, that you don't, you weren't mentioning, and so that's what the board decided. We made a decision to go forward.
No, I understand, but I, okay, I wanted to have my say, I'm getting my say, and that's is, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't think you're gonna have a hell of a lot of expense trying to get right-of-way, you're gonna have to close the road for the most expensive kind of building you do with having crews out there to guide cars around and do all that, and that's more and more money. I don't know how it's gonna turn out on the engineering study when they turn it in, and that's the other part to me, is we shouldn't approve this because we haven't seen the engineering study. So, that's enough.
If all of this keeps moving, how long is that out? How far out is that?
I believe they're looking, Jim has a better idea, but I believe that they're looking to get bid documents done this year. Construction would be the following year.
Yeah. See, so it's two years out.
Actually, it's, one portion of construction would be one year, and then they would have to do another portion the following year, or when flows were low, because to take off B-res, you have to have the low flows to get the tanks up at that point, so.
See, that's, see, in my recollection, Bill, part of what drove this slowly is, we talked about, let's do this slowly, we don't need to rush into anything, because that rubber tank up there, the bladder, is several years. One of the guys said, you're looking at three or four years, two or three years, something like that. Well, and that's what we're looking at now. By the time all of this gets going and we have to make a payment, we're talking three or four years.
Okay, that's fine with me. But the problem with me is the money.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I don't think it's a good idea for this district to borrow that much money. We don't have any money here. We don't have any grant money coming here. When you saw the pipe schedules tonight, and we're paying attention to them, most of those years when we put in a lot of pipe was with grant money.
Yeah.
Almost 80% of the money went into those pipelines, and that's why in the last five years, we haven't put much pipe in, there's no grant money. So, and this is, to me, it's, you get some grants or something, and to go along with this, and you got about a million bucks in reserve, and...
See, now, we have the potential, wasn't there about a three, three million is pending grants? But still, that's not a huge amount.
Yeah, they're pending, they're all...
Right, correct. They're not guaranteed yet.
Well, I, I've got my say now, you guys, when we go on with the rest of the business.
Bill, you know what bothers me more than this is, one of the reasons I'd like to go slow is, we have no idea what's gonna happen with this whole dam safety thing. Because if they come up and they just are hammering this, and we have to get into some 10, 15, 20 million dollar project on the dams, yeah, boy, we're in trouble.
Well, see, I think, I don't think, my opinion is basically yours. We need to do some, couple of years planning here, look at reserves and everything. I don't want to be on this board when we go to the employees and say, with, through the recession, some, when my son worked for Sutter County, they came in and cut wages across the top at 5%. If we get in a financial deal, all I have to do is look at where our money's going, and we would cut salaries. We wouldn't have any choice.
We would have to.
So if the projects aren't planned well, and the financing, grants aren't there, these are the downsides that I've been thinking about, and I don't think they're well planned. I just don't think it is because of the other things that are hanging over our heads that we might have to come up with millions of dollars, and our credit rating isn't as high as it used to.
I move approval of the state board drinking water state revolving fund agreement, amendment number one, for the reservoir B replacement project, and authorize the interim district manager to execute the amendment document.
I'll second that.
Any further questions? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's four to one.
Retirement plan audit. Everybody has a written report.
Yep.
It's pretty short and to the, to the point. I just want to kind of walk through his procedures. The employee group gave me the scope of work that he, that they wanted to see done. I gave that directly to the auditor. The auditor did his own calculations before he ever contacted FTJ to come up with his numbers. He then contacted FTJ to get their numbers and to get the philosophy behind their numbers. He then compared the two numbers. According to, when I talked to him, he actually said that most of the employees actually came out ahead based on FTJ's calculation, based on what his calculation was. The only finding he had was in our plan documents where it stated that we would give 3% of their employee contribution.
Up to.
Instead of 100%, up to 3%. So we've been, we've been doing this, the latter, and we haven't been following the plan documents. But we did make that, actually, it was good because I did make that change in our current plan documents with ICMA. So this was, this has been forwarded to all the employees, so all employees have a copy of this, and I haven't had a lot of questions about it, so.
Okay.
That's where it is.
I was amazed at how little or how insignificant the errors were based on all of the outcry[1688.91] I was amazed at how little or how insignificant the errors were based on all of the outcry that I had heard. I was expecting this to be thousands and thousands of dollars, and it was a whole lot to do about not much, in my opinion.
The other thing, too, is he actually decreased the cost of the audit based on that he, he realized that there was no IRS reporting requirements. So, he, because of that, he decreased the, the audit down to nine thousand dollars. I believe the original cost was twelve thousand five hundred.
Oh, great.
It was, yeah.
And he just decreased it down to nine thousand.
Yay.
And he used a de minimis amount that was in the IRC code, as in IRS code.
What is the standing, Emily, on the lawsuit?
That's a closed session discussion.
Pardon?
It's a closed session discussion item. It's not agendized.
Okay, so next month, we'll have an unclosed session?
We certainly can.
Yes, please.
Do we need to? Yeah.
We should have more update by next, next month, too.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. There's not a lot to report.
Yeah.
So, if there's any more questions, we can approve it.
I move to accept the independent auditor's report prepared by TWHC regarding Paradise Irrigation Districts 401A and 457 Employee Benefits Plan on Vendor Fee Overcharges during the period from August 2013 to November 2016.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, F. Paradise Lake Committee Title.
That's mine, I guess.
Yep.
Well, when we made it to Paradise Lake Committee most recently, I was surprised because the recreation is an integral part of the lakes, and we're talking about possibility of trails going by the Megalia Reservoir and changing that somewhat for different reasons. We've been talking about the lake committee. For some reason, the fellow that was doing the work with NRCS, no, excuse me, Buick County RCD, didn't come to the meeting. He called me and told me he was going to come, but he didn't show up. I haven't had a chance to catch up with him. But I think it's, just like we went through all of the, tonight, our water rights, and every, both lakes were referred to as recreational use. So, I would like to have that name changed back to Paradise Lake Recreation Committee rather than Paradise Lake Committee, because that indicates the true value of the, of the lakes to the district's customers and for bringing people from out of town to come and fish and kayak, you know, people from Chico, and so forth, and bring in income to the district. So, that's the reason for the thing being on the agenda.
And, and the reason that the recreation was taken out of it, to make it general, to include both recreation and supply under one lake committee, and, but if you want to actually name it for exactly what it's going to be used for, it would be Paradise Lake Supply and Recreation Committee, or Recreation and Supply.
What supplies?
Lake Supply, the Lake Supply Committee actually now comes under the purview of this lake committee.
Water supply.
For water supply.
No, but I mean, whether exactly supplies are you talking about?
Water, for Paradise Lake, to ensure that PID has a water, water supply. That water supply committee, the work that it does now is under the Paradise Lake Committee. That's why it was a general term, but both, the work of both those committees now is under the Lake Committee. Water supply and, and actually, technically, even the botanical garden's under that committee as well.
What?
Technically, the botanical garden is under that committee now as well.
I didn't realize the botanical garden ended up there.
Yeah, they're all streamlined.
But, see, that's recreation.
Yeah, it is.
And that's, we're not even, we're involved in that as just as visitors, basically. The Park and Rec District is supposed to do the botanical gardens in the lake park up there.
Right. But any, any interface with PID is done through this Lake Committee now with the botanical garden.
Well, that's fine with me. I just wanted to make sure we included the word recreation. Did you want to say Paradise Supply and Lake Water Supply? I always thought that was just a given, that this would be involved in that.
But it doesn't, it doesn't diminish the fact that it serves multiple purposes to just abbreviate it, does it?
That's why it was general.
We're not taking away from the recreation aspect of it, it's just...
We could always have in the, in the meeting agenda, we could always have recreation as a heading, and then water supply as a heading. You see, I'm saying, in every agenda...
It does both the work.
So, so it's always there.
Or you could just call it the Recreation and Supply, Lake Recreation and Supply.
Okay.
Because it doesn't just do recreation anymore. It does more than that. That's all.
Yeah.
I like, I like brevity.
I know, I understand what you're saying, you don't want it, you don't want it to go way, diminish.
We've always had supply reports come through the Lake Committee. That was nothing new.
And it still will.
What's it going to hurt if we relabel it like Bill wants it to be?
It doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't change anything, yeah.
No, doesn't change anything. It just makes people understand that we are in a recreation business. There's nothing else in here that talks about...
I got to redo my report.
[laughing].
So, what do you want to call it, Bill, exactly?
Just Paradise Lake and Recreation, uh...
Paradise Lake Recreation Committee, just...
Committee, yeah.
Sure. I don't care, frankly, okay?
I have no problem with it.
You're right.
I don't, it's good with me, okay?
It doesn't truly reflect what it does if you just call it Recreation.
Yeah.
No, Paradise Lake and Recreation.
Oh, Lake and Recreation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and, you wanted, and...
All right, I like that.
So, will that sound like a motion?
You want to make the motion?
Go for it.
You make the motion, go.
Okay, we change the name Paradise Lake Committee to Paradise Lake and Recreation Committee.
Good.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess you completely understood, Georgiana, yeah?
Well, all I can do is say thank you. I won something.
You bet, yay. You're always a winner, Bill. Okay, Committee Reports. Y'all jump forward and give your reports, please.
Oh, can I interrupt you just for a second, Dan?
Sure.
I, I was remiss in neglecting to read one sentence out of that audit that was done on the retirement, and could I please read that now? "We reviewed George Barber's account in detail and determined that fees, charges, and services were the same as other participants."
If we caught that, that would be...
That needs to be...
We will not penalize you for going back.
That was a big issue.
Okay, back to Committee Reports. Ad hoc, Demonstration Garden.
Because of my wife's potential surgery, I didn't end up coming to the meeting. I had to back out at the last minute. It turned out that the surgery was put off to the next week, so...
It's on your shoulders, Dan.
And, and she gave the report.
The minutes stand, and just to say we're moving forward, and we have, meet again tomorrow.
Good.
I almost forgot about that.
Nine o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, Paradise Lake and Recreation Committee?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Okay, and this is not, don't take this the wrong way, it's not derogatory, but I've been reading about the, the Demonstration Garden Committee and the meetings, I think ever since I've been on the board here, going on two years now.
It's looking good.
And all I read is what they're going to do, 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 and I'm wondering...
We need more volunteers.
I'm just wondering how long this committee is going to be meeting and deciding what they're going to do, and if we're going to do anything. I'm just curious.
Well, if you, if you would go back and read every, every copy of every meeting, you'd see that things get done, they get dropped off, and things get added, dropped off.
Every time I leave a board meeting here, I drive by and I look over and I see the same dirt field with the same rocks.
But every time I drive by, I think, gosh, it's looking better every day.
Yeah, yeah, because you can look now, and there's the irrigations in, the vendor boards in, the pressure dust in.
Sprinklers are in, the dividers are in.
Yeah.
It's, you know, get the snowball rolling, but it's rolling now.
Yeah, yeah, but it's going to, it's going to come together fast from here because now the plants are in.
I mean, I...
Seven hundred and fifty hours of volunteer...
But are we, what are we...
You know, it's an ad hoc committee, and I would think a permanent committee would be, you know...
No, let's keep it ad hoc, so it'll, so, let's keep it ad hoc, it'll end someday. All right. What's, what's needed in regards to the blooms? What was the projected dollar amount that was needed on that? Because we've got a total of twelve hundred, but how, how much do you need?
It actually was just to go toward just funding the garden because it was, it was dedicated to Doug Fletcher, and it certainly now more than pays for the plaque.
Oh, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, so we're way money has, now it's, you know, I think we had something like an eight thousand dollar budget, so, this is, any, any money is toured will be, you know, used, yeah.
We'll also be doing some landscaping around the office, finish up that. That's, after we get through the garden up here, there's a few things that need to be done around the office that were put off, and that would be totally...
That's another committee for another time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, North State Economic Forecast Conference.
Do we have Mark's, yeah, Mark's Lake Committee?
Yeah, you, I handed out the...
Oops, I read it and then skipped right on it, I'm sorry. Yep.
The biggest thing that I wanted to bring up is Steve Roderick opened our meeting by letting us know that Paradise Park and Recreation District passed a resolution in support of Proposition 68, and I didn't know much about it, but I went online and read about it today, and it's the Park Environment Water Bond Act. It's going to be on the ballot in June eighteen, June, June of this year, excuse me. It would authorize four billion dollars in general obligation bonds for state and local parks, environmental protection projects, and flood protection projects. And Steve asked for us to take it to the board and see if we would be interested in creating a resolution, a similar resolution in support of Proposition 68. I think we need to get a little more, and to see what kind of benefits it does for us specifically, if that's something that we want to support.
Yeah, we'd have to agenda, right, correct.
Absolutely, I'm just, I'm just informational only at this point, yeah.
Great.
Who can do some research on that and bring it forward?
Yeah, next month at the board meeting, we can bring forward, I don't know, you know, we're going to have another Lake Committee because of Kids Day, we have to get that help. It's all been organized and worked out by the staff. We need to go over that.
It's a, it's a pretty encompassing bill. I went online today and just read a little bit about it, and there, there's water, excuse me, there's money in there for water projects, but there's money in there for parks, there's money in there for a lot of stuff, flood protection, you know, they, they kind of, big umbrella so everybody's happy, right?
Put the state a little farther in debt.
Right, yes. So, anyway, and then we had a good meeting. I don't know if you can read it or you want me to go over it? It's all right in front of you there.
We can read it?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
North State Economic Forecast. Cliff and Bill?
Well, I didn't make that one. My wife made it, and she said Bill was there, so I'm going to let him report on it.
Okay.
Oh, you snuck one in.
Yeah.
I wondered where you were. I kept looking around. I didn't see your wife.
I couldn't get away from work. She saw you, so I know you were there.
Well, of course, at any rate, the conference was worthwhile. It took minutes and everything else, and of course, I left all the information at home, forgot it tonight, and, but I think you go to these things, you make some contacts, and also, there was, attendance was down considerably from the years in the past, I don't know, sometimes good times or better times, to something like this, it's down. And there was some government agencies that did lone work in the past, weren't there as far as vendors. The vendors that were there were more into advertising our special things, so the mix was quite a bit different. But the economic forecast, what they came up with was basically what we're experiencing now, that growth in our communities and so forth, looks forward to the building industries that continue growing and other things. Unfortunately, it was also reporting about agriculture's falling behind and off, and land values have fallen in agriculture and so have commodity prices, and this goes up clean across the country. Equipment sales are down and all that. Things that four years ago were booming were the rest of the economy was in the dumps. It turns out this is, in my lifetime, this is the third time we've gone through this cycle. Agriculture booming when the rest of the economy's in trouble, and then when the rest of the